Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for showing up this morning on a Saturday to review the budget. We're going to keep it very simple today. We're going to do the pledge, and then we're going to jump right in. After that, Mayor Farrell, it's your floor.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell. Thank you for joining us this morning. Today's agenda is going to be very simple. We're going to go tab by tab through this budget. Mayor Farrell is going to lead us in talking about the things that are significant increase, decrease. We'll have a moment for questions from the council on each department, each tab in this budget, and then we will move on to the next tab and so on till we get to the back. So again, Mayor Farrell, your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here today. Do we all have our binders to start this time?
We do.
When we last met to talk about the budget, it was a city council meeting where I delivered a budget and a budget message to you. I want to remind everybody what was said there as just kind of the starting point as context, and then we'll jump in to explain more of it in detail. As you all know, the city charter talks about before February 15th, the mayor gives a budget and budget message to explain the budget, outline the proposed financial policies, describe the important features, indicate the major changes, and summarize the city's debt position, and include other materials that mayor deems. I did my very best to do that in as much detail as hopefully that any of you have ever seen in a budget to explain where our revenue has been, where I think it's going to be, where our debt position is. And after I deliver that budget message and the budget, procedurally, it's now in your hands, right? It's now, according to the charter, up to the council to decide what to do. This is my first year as mayor, so forgive me if I'm telling you all things that you know. What happens now is that, you know, you publish this budget and budget message summary in one or more newspapers. After that happens, it's open for at least two weeks for the public to come and inspect. I assume that's going to be in the city clerk's office, and I think you're going to, if I understand correctly, publish it on Monday.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Or submit it on Monday. After that two-week period, then there's a public hearing. After that public hearing, you may have budget work sessions, and then after those work sessions, it goes to the council for consideration for adoption. All that to say, according to the charter, I fulfilled my obligation to the city by giving you the budget and budget message. It's now in your hands. And so what we're doing here today is none of those things I just mentioned. I've given the budget and budget message. It's now in your hands to publish, have a public hearing, do your budget work sessions, and then consider for adoption. So what I hope to do today is to explain to you in as much detail as I possibly can what's in it. It is, as I mentioned in my presentation, my goal for this 2026 budget, I've listed six things that I wanted out of it. I wanted it to be transparent. I think all of you would agree that transparency is really important for what's in this budget, and I'm happy to tell you every piece of it as best I can. I want it to be accurate, right? So a budget is only a plan. I may come back to that concept many times. You can deviate from that plan, right? But once I give it to you, there's a plan, and we have to then understand that things may change. This is what we plan to do with a budget. It needs to be flexible because things will change. They always do. We don't have the ability to have a complete foresight of what's going to happen in the future, so it has to be flexible. I want it to be focused. I think you've heard me say many times that it needs to be focused on our priorities, which are public safety, the infrastructure, and growing the economy. So all the dollars that you'll see in here should be funneling to those three things. I want it to be understandable, not just to you but to the public. That is ultimately this money belongs to. All of this money, these $78 million we're going to spend, belong to the people of Huntington. And I want to make sure that everyone understands exactly what we're spending it on. And then lastly, I want it to be forward-looking, that I want to be a responsible steward for the city's money, and I want to be forward-focused on making sure that we're setting it up for the long term, not the short term. And so we'll go through all of those things. The other principles we're going to follow to remind you is we need to build up our financial resiliency. I want to make sure we have at least two months of operating cash on hand so that we can be flexible into the future. That is embedded into this budget. We also need to plan for quarterly cash flow because when, on July 1st, we won't have $78 million ready to spend. We have to send out bills to our residents and then collect the money, and that happens on a quarterly basis. So this money doesn't all show up on day one. It has to be spent, collected, and spent regularly throughout the year. We're going to allocate those resources accordance with those three priorities we talked about. And then I want to make sure this is a conservative budget. I don't want to be overly aggressive. I don't want to cut too much or add too much. I want to make sure that it is a realistic but conservative budget, again, because I'm trying to have a responsible approach to how we handle our finances. All of that to set the context for, this is a flat budget. Last year, this council approved a $78 million budget. This year, I hope that you adopt a $78 million budget. It is virtually the same. Inside of the category, some things have moved, but there's not a lot of drama, right? What we're going to do is make sure that $78 million is spent on our priorities as we go through each tab. I'll be happy to explain how we've made those choices and then move through it. I also want to remind everyone that this is about the general fund. This is not about all the other entities that the city has. This is not about the Water Quality Board or HMDA, the Huntington Municipal Development Authority. It's not about the opioid settlement money. What we're going to talk about today is narrowly focused to the general fund. That's what's in front of you in your binders, and that's what I hope to talk about. If you have questions about the others, I'm happy to entertain them, but it's not what is in front of you for adoption in the coming weeks. Let me stop there, Mr. Chairman. Did you have any questions about kind of that pretext?
Yeah. Any questions for Mayor Farrell?
I have a question.
Before we get started, thank you.
Mayor Farrell, you've just mentioned that the Water Quality Board, the HMDA and opioid settlement revenue lines are not included in this budget for our review and that you are happy to answer our questions about them. Why have you chosen not to include them in this budget?
Because this budget is about the general fund. It's, the opioid money has to come in front of you at some point in the future. All of the spending that happens eventually comes in front of you, but by charter, this is what we're talking about.
So what I'm hearing you say is that this is the general fund-only budget review and that your plans for the other funds are not going to be available in this public hearing currently today, but do you have a plan to present them in the next few days before we submit our plan and vote on it to the state, say in April?
What you're submitting to the state in April is the general fund budget.
Is just the general fund, yes.
Right? And so as we spend that other money, as we develop plans for their money, it will come in front of you. I don't have any plan between now and when you consider this for adoption of breaking down what we're going to do with that money.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question.
Yeah.
Is there a reason for department heads not to be present in this meeting as it is some of our council members' first meeting during their budget session? I know when I did my first budget session, having department heads here and asking questions on exactly why they submitted what, you know, what their spending is, is there a reason for that choice?
Yeah. This is my budget, right? This is the mayor's budget, and the department heads have had input that they gave to me to put into the budget, and I'm prepared to answer the questions about each of those departments. And if I can't answer questions about their, I'm happy to take your question and get back to you. But it's about me telling you, the council, what my budget is. And so I'm accountable for it and here to answer any of your questions. Any other questions before we get into the tabs?
Yep. We can start with revenues?
We will start with revenue. And I don't, we don't have page numbers, but my tab is about the, past the first page, which is just the top line, $78 million, down to the more detailed account numbers that are on the left-hand side. I don't know how much more simple I can put it, but this is a $78 million budget. It's flat, and that should be the first takeaway. I also want to remind everybody who may be there first time that there will be a budget revision. When things happen, when things change, for instance, by June 30th, we'll have a better idea of what our unassigned fund balance is. When we know that, we'll have to revise this budget, and within 60 days of the start of the year, that is, by July 31st, we will have to submit a revised budget to the state. And when we do that, I'll come back to you based on how we end the year. We'll update the ending fund balances and any changes that have happened between now and then, and we'll submit a revised budget to the state. So again, this is a budget plan. This is what we know today. It will be amended and revised and brought back in front of you later this summer after we finish out the year.
Chair, Mayor Farrell, may I ask a question?
Apologies for the interruption.
Yeah.
One other question I had is, what is two months' operating cost for the city of Huntington as we consider the $78 million annual budget that we have?
Yeah. If you'll go back to, I think you have my presentation in your binders. You'll see in there, there's a chart, and it's $11 million.
$11 million.
There's a red, there's a, two months is what we've estimated.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes. And Ms. Rumbold, I think it's important to state, as I did before, that that's an estimate, that number goes up and down.
Yeah.
Right? We looked at what we thought were two months' operating cash so that if something happens where we don't have federal funds coming to us, if federal funds are frozen, if whatever next pandemic crisis happens, that we can operate the city without interruption.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So to start, when I look at this revenue budget, I think the first thing that we point out is line 299 is the unassigned fund balance, right? And that shows right now the FY '26 proposed budget at $9 million, right? That line is what we estimate it will be at 630 if we have a disciplined spending approach through the rest of the year, right? That number, again, coming back to my budget presentation, could be anywhere between $7 and $9 million. That depends on whether or not we spend $78 million throughout the year, $80 million throughout the year, right? If we do this right, which is what I hope, it'll be $9 million. That's the line that gets, that's the most important number you can look at at 630, June 30th, is that $9 million if we can get there. If we do, you'll see that the change is close to $3 million from the prior year, which is down. That's a bad thing. If we went from about $12 million to $9 million, that's a bad thing, but it's better than being down to $7 million. It's because we've spent a lot of money in a lot of different areas that drives down that unassigned fund balance. And specifically, to Ms. Rumbold's question, I would like that eventually during my term to be $11 million, right? That's what we're building for financial resiliency and the primary account that I'd like you to look at. For all of the rest of the revenue estimates, and they are estimates, I want to point out that this is done as a forecast with our best judgment. We've looked at the past. We've seen what has happened in prior years. We look to the future and decide what do we think will happen based on the current economic environment, any changes to the law, and we give our best guess. We try to be conservative so we don't say we're going to have a whole bunch of money and then it doesn't come in, right? We also don't want it to be too low where we estimate a number and we know that that BNO tax or the sales tax is going to be much higher, so I'm trying to give my best guess. That's what a forecast is, and that's what a plan is. Also, you'll note that each of these are not entirely within the city's control. Some of them are county, and some of them are state estimates. So the numbers, I can't tell you with a high deal of certainty that that's what it will be, but we've done our best to explain it. For instance, the property tax, right? You'll see that there is an $872, $873,000 increase in our estimate for FY '26 versus FY '25. And that's because the state has a new program, a dollar-for-dollar income tax credit, to incentivize people who pay and pay early. And so because of that change in the state, we think that there will be some increase to the property taxes that we are able to collect. In future years, as our city grows and our property values increase, we hope that we'll continue to get more property taxes. But for next year, we estimate that number to be $6.7 million, which is an increase from the prior year. You can go down through and look at the other numbers that have increased from the BNO tax to the sales tax. Those numbers are all higher, but not, they are not as high as what we expect to collect this year in our actuals. I'll also point out that the user fee at line 348 is $200,000 higher. That's the money that is specifically collected for paving streets in the Huntington Police Department. We anticipate that'll be $7.5 million. It's not nearly enough to do our paving, our street construction, and to pay for the police department, but it will, all of it, every dollar of the user fee will be dedicated to those things. You'll also notice on line 380, the interest income is going to be up $180,000. I believe this to be an anomaly that, and you'll see in FY '24, that number was $371,000, and then we budgeted last year for $20,000. To put this very simply, that what this is, is interest income that we earn from money being in the bank, right? And so we had a bunch of money in the bank, and we got $371,000. We still had that money in the bank, and we should have expected to get more. I anticipate this year, that number will actually be $280,000, right? And so that is a change from the budget. That's a good thing. It's more income than we were expecting. And so we've proposed a budget of $200,000, which is still less than that, and that's because interest rates are dropping, right? And we anticipate the interest rate dropping, which is why we got the $200,000 number.
Chair, I'm so sorry. Mayor, I have another question. Mayor Farrell, I apologize. I'm having a hard time following. You're a fast talker and a good one, but which line are you referring to?
380.
380, interest earned on investments?
Yes.
And so the anticipated budget is 280,000?
No.
200,000.
It's 200,000.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say 280, and so that's why I'm finding it a little bit confusing.
You see the line that says $20,000 in there, the FY '25?
Yes.
That's what we, that's what the budget was for this year, this current year.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I think that number will actually be $280,000.
Much higher. Yes. I think, I apologize, a personal request. If you could slow down when you mention the account number so that I have a quicker, even better time finding the line, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Not a problem at all.
Okay.
So let me, we'll stop there. I'm happy to go through any of the lines that you have specific questions about. All of it to say, the budget's $78 million. We anticipate $78 million revenue, and that's what we're going to spend.
Any other questions on revenue from Mayor Farrell?
I have questions.
Ms. Ma'am.
Looking at line 329, inspection fees. In 2024, we were at 1,400. The budget is now 30,000, so I think that means we're going to have more inspections. Can you describe your plan for that? Are we hiring additional staff, or are we just going to hit the pavement more?
We're going to be more focused on enforcement.
Okay.
And charging fees, and we've, again, we're not hiring more people.
Okay.
We're using our people and telling them to go out and inspect these properties and enforce the code, and if we need to, fine people.
Great. I have additional questions. Just so you know, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 lines highlighted in this section, so just for explanations and for stuff.
Sure.
Okay. The employee health insurance premium charges are just slightly changing as well as retirees' medical insurance charges. Is that in anticipation of greater expenses, less expenses? What were you?
Yeah. So the employee health insurance premium charges are money that comes out of our employees, city employees' paychecks. And that amount is determined by whether you're single, family with one kid, a family. And so as the population of our employees change, where maybe a single person leaves the city and a family joins, that number naturally changes.
Okay.
And so we're estimating what we will be collecting from our city employees based on the current demographic mix of our employee group.
Thank you. Okay. And then you're anticipating line 348, special assessments, the city service fee. In 2024, it was a little over $8 million, but we're expecting about a, overall, a $500,000, approximately $500,000 loss from 2024 and 2026. Why, is that just a conservative estimate? We don't think that we're going to collect as, there's going to be less employees contributing to the city service fee?
Yeah. I mean, the user fees, the people that are working in the city, obviously.
Okay.
And you'll see that in FY '25, we budgeted $7.3 million. And so I'm hoping that more people pay their user fees this year than last, or next year versus current. And so it's actually an increase of revenue we're collecting, right? You're asking, why is it less than the $8 million? And this goes back to the idea that all of the federal money that came through had a positive impact on the city, from BNO tax, user fee, those things. And as that money gets expended, there'll be fewer people coming to our city and being able to pay that user fee.
Thank you. And so line 352, under fire protection fees, it follows that same logic, except that there's actually a huge increase. Where in 2024, we were at 200,000, and in 2025, the amended budget was about 360, so that's a big bump. It's a small bump to this year, or to the next year, 380. Are we seeing actual, like, actual numbers to warrant that increase in fire protection fees?
Yes. That's what we're anticipating. We looked at the actuals and projected the future, and that's exactly what we're expecting.
Great. Thank you. Next, line 376, gaming income. I've always found this to be quite curious. Can you explain what the gaming income line is?
I think if you go back to your budget package, you all have a list of what each of the categories are.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it describes it in there.
Okay.
Probably better than I can describe it to you.
I apologize. I don't have that in front of me.
Let me read it to you.
Okay.
This is the city's portion of state tax on gaming, and it's based on the number of residents in the city.
Hmm.
Line 376.
They're probably like gambling. Do we have any ideas?
Yes.
Is anybody, it's about gambling?
It's gambling.
And so, but there isn't, there's another line, 397, video lottery. Can you explain the, so in video lottery, we took in 284 in 2024, and now in 2026, we're anticipating an increase up to 250,000. Can you describe how we're taxing video lottery in Huntington?
Yeah. It's collected monthly, and it's the city's tax on the video lottery machines that are located in the city limits.
Okay.
So when someone locates one of them, we tax them.
Okay. Do we have a cap in the city about how many video lottery establishments can open up?
There is not.
There's not a current quota?
They do have to, they have to abide by the Western Union State Lottery rules. So it has to be so far from a school, so far from a church. There are boundaries and stipulations that the Western Union Lottery puts on the establishments that the city adheres to, right? So as far as the number, is it capped at 30? No.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's also in our zoning code.
Okay.
It's only allowed, I mean, it's consistent with the state guidelines, but also it's only allowed in certain zoning areas.
Right.
And what are we, is the fee that we collect from video lottery establishments, is that set up by resolution or by ordinance? Does anybody know? Or is it?
It was before my time, and I've been here ninth year. So it's always just been there. I don't know how it was initially set up, so.
Anecdotally, I'm curious about gambling establishments within our community. I had a friend come by and who now works in that industry and recognize you have these small shops, video game parlors, where it only takes one person making minimum wage, like $8.75 or $10 an hour, to run a room that has, I don't know, six or eight or 10 machines in. And then individuals from our community go in there and drop about $2,000 a night on their own. They break, they bring in somewhere between $10,000 and $12,000 every day in revenue by hiring one person, and that revenue, if the video game parlor is owned locally, well, it goes to one person, but if it's also an out-of-state corporation, then it flows out. The, that return on investment is interesting for that particular style of business, but I also feel that is kind of detrimental to our community because when you have something like, say, a restaurant who has staff and all, like, they take in $10,000 or $12,000 a day, that money immediately flows back out into the community. If you have a business that has expensive equipment or factory stuff, the money that they bring in, thousands and thousands of dollars, it still sits in the inventory and equipment that they have. It stays within our community. But when we have gambling revenues, they're not going back into employees when you only have one staff person making minimum wage to generate $10,000 or $12,000 a night. That is, it's also one of the aspects that video lottery businesses tend to drive down property values. It's just not, ugh, it's kind of a parasitic business practice. I'm not afraid to say it. So I would, I would drop this thought, like a seed of suggestions, since this is a public hearing, so everybody knows my thoughts on it. I'd love to hear your all's thoughts on it, maybe at another time, but increasing the fees to discourage additional expansion of, for whatever that's worth, of video game parlors in our community and in our neighborhoods, and also to help the city get additional revenues from a very high-profit-making industry that's really not investing much back into our community. So that's my little, thank you. That's what I want to say there. And actually, moving on to number 378, miscellaneous fees, vacant buildings. The vacant building actual and fees collected were $273,000 in 2024, but we had an amended budget, very low, of $25,000 for 2025, and we expect it to be the same. Is that because we've been successfully knocking down these vacant buildings? Is that why it's dropped so much?
I don't know why. The budget was amended to $25,000. It's what we anticipate collecting this year.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Tia, just to assuage, your video lottery is not permitted by right anywhere in our city. So they have to go before BZA.
Okay.
So if that's a concern in your head, it's not allowed in any residential, and it's only allowed by conditional use with appeal and the judicial process anywhere else, like in commercial and industrial. So there are catches in place to keep things from them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Then the line 377, the capital lease revenue. So it was $1.3 million in 2024, but it disappeared in 2025. Can someone remind me, where did that money go?
Yeah. The way capital leases work is that by the accounting rules, you have to incur them in the year that they are obligated. And so in those years, where we bought a fire truck or copiers, you have to record them in that year, and then once you do that, you don't record them in the future years, and we don't have any new capital operating leases forecasted for 2026.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Those are all the questions that I have at this time for, oh, I'm so sorry, except for the next page, 365, 366, and 367. Are we there yet? Is that okay? Is that part of the revenue?
Sure.
Okay.
I haven't touched on them yet. Would you like me to?
Yes. I didn't know if you were.
Repine on them first?
Yeah. I didn't know. Sorry. If you want to talk about them.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. So 365 is the first line on that page. It's federal grants. We only record the revenue anticipated for what we actually have in-house, right? What we already know. As we continue to work on getting more grants, that line will change, and of course, it'll come back in front of council when we do. But we anticipate it to be, right now, $500,000 less than it was in the prior year because that's the number of, the amount of the grants that we have in-house, and that's why we've And that's why we've put them in here. The same goes with the state grants and the grants clearing. Ms. Rumball, I would be happy to answer what questions you have about that.
Yeah. Since we have, they're kind of separated between federal and on 365, and then 366 is our state government grants, and then 367, other grants or grant clearing. Are we, the biggest concern, and I'm only taking this from the media headlines, is that there are, there's a freeze on federal government grants for 90 days during the current administration. Is that what, is that impacting line 365? Can you, are we, or do we have better assurances that lines 366 and 367 are okay? They're not frozen, things are good? Can you give us some, like a temperature check on how that impacts the city?
I can give you no temperature check on Washington.
Mm-hmm.
I know what you know.
Okay.
And that is for current year, right, rather than FY '26.
Mm-hmm.
So what I've done here is look forward to 2026, and we're anticipating no freezes, and that the grants that we have won, that we will get, right? If something happens in current year and those get clawed back or canceled, these numbers will change. And I have no way of knowing any more than anyone else in the public what's going to happen.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, just a point of reference, if you go back and look at financial statements for this fiscal year, we're at month six. So it's easier math, if you do it at six months. We're at 165% of our budget for state grants. So if you look at that financial statement, you can see it's halfway through the year, so we should be at about 50%. And so if you go through that, you can see where we're running over and under budget, and it gives, it's a really nerdy exercise I do, but it's really helpful if you can get it. But it's nice to look at and see, okay, we've moved money. Well, it's because, like, the fire protection fee, we're at 74% of our budget for this year already, which explains why we have to adjust, right? So just sharing that nerdy, very nerdy thing.
Thank you, thank you for sharing, because I fully get where you're coming from with that. It's much easier to look at. Mayor Farrell, you want to move on to expenses?
Yeah, sure. I'll start at the summary page, and then we'll go tab by tab. The overview, if you will, is that we're going to spend exactly what we anticipate for revenue. At the city level, we don't have, I guess this is a benefit, we have to have a balanced budget. We can't print money, we can't have deficits, we spend what we collect and what we anticipate we're collecting. And so we're going to spend exactly what we've, we've budgeted for. I'll draw your attention to line 40, 408. It's about halfway down the page. Insurance programs. Let me get a head nod from Ms. Rumball. You there?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm there.
Yeah. And I, I highlight this, this just as an illustration for the rest of the budget and all of these discussions, that a budget doesn't mean that's what you're actually going to do. All right? We knew in 2024, or the last few years, that healthcare premium expense has been about $12 million, and we've budgeted $9.7 million. So we obviously have the ability to spend higher than in a budget category, right? We have controls in place as a city to make sure we don't overspend the amount of money that we have. And then when that happens, when you overspend a category, it has to come out of somewhere else. I anticipate what's happened is that we conservatively budgeted our B and O tax, our sales tax, and so when revenues come in, it works itself out. But what I've asked our staff to do for all of these expenses is to be as accurate as we can. I wanted all of you to know, this is what I think is actually going to be, even if it's going to be wrong. And I'm not trying to underplay or overplay any category, where we're anticipating more revenue or less revenue, a higher expense or a lower expense. And we did that by looking at the history, what's happened over the last few years, or even going back to what happened before COVID in certain instances, because that federal money came through. And so we're looking for, back to my budget principles, an accurate reflection of what we think we're going to spend. And then I want to make sure it's understandable to all of you. Also, as we go through all of these expenses, I am doing my best to talk about material things, what that means in accounting parlance, or the things that matter. We have a $78 million budget, so 1% of that $78 million is $780,000. If you had a accounting audit, they typically look between differences between 1% and 5%. And so they'd say, it's less than $1 million, they're probably not overly concerned from an audit standpoint. Now, $780,000 is still a lot of money, right? Particularly when you put it into context of what category it's in. So if 1/100 is $780,000, $78,000 is 1/1,000 of this budget. You would think that sounds like pretty small. But if, if the office supply number is $78,000, I would anticipate you'll have questions, and I would be happy to answer them. But as I go through here, I'm going to point out what I think are the material changes, the things that really matter. Happy to answer all of your questions about any category, but I'm going to touch on the things that I think are a matter that reach a material level to explain to you what's going on. So let's just go through the tabs and do that. The first one is the city council tab. This budget is flat. The council chair has seen it and approved it without input from us, and so it's flat. Any questions about that?
I have a question. So in the past, the city council folk were invited to participate in a program called the municipal league. And I'm, I'm wondering if, if that, that participation is cut and travel to that is cut? Like, because there, there's about $12,500 cut under personal services. And so could you explain, is that such, is that what we're talking about with the cuts or something?
I direct that question to your chair.
Yeah, so this was sent over from Scott Arthur.
Okay.
And it looked relatively close to last year's. And I told him that it was okay with no changes. There are some things that are still in this current budget we're in with, already approved by the council with office furniture and things for leasing barber's office.
Oh.
That was not taken out of the budget for that. But yes, the municipal league tab and travel.
So are we still planning to participate in the municipal league? And will city council folks still have an opportunity to attend the league for the training purposes that it offers? This is a, are you familiar with the municipal league, Mayor Farrell?
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I've had the honor of attending it for the last few years. It was incredibly informative, especially in 2020, 2021, as a new city council person, get to really learn about the rules and also meet with other municipality representatives throughout the state. It's bipartisan, everybody's there. And it, it was incredibly beneficial. I would hope that we would still be able to attend, because Huntington is one of the largest cities in West Virginia, and it's important for us to, I think, make a presence there, as well as bring back collective knowledge, so we can work together as a state. And finally, the municipal league hosts these conferences annually in different cities. Huntington was the host last year, so, you know, that brought in significant revenue to our hotels and conference centers. So that's something I would hope that we would still participate in. Is that, we'd already talked about some other major cuts, but is that another that's thinking about being cut?
I will be more than happy to talk with you, talk with council, and get everyone's thoughts when it comes to that, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, may I, just very briefly? It looks to me like in 2026, it reflects the actual expenditures for 2024. I think participation in that program is very low because it is multiple days during the work week. And so while many of us would like to go, we're not able to. And so it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to have a lot of money in a budget year after year when we're really only using a fraction of that. So I think, you know, in, in 2024, it was at 1,146, that was the actual expenditure, and there's $1,000 budgeted for 2026, which to me would seem consistent with the actual expenditure, which is, you know.
Thank you.
If there's like a big run on municipal league, I'm sure we could amend that at some point.
And with, with the people that are still in part of the working population, that is a struggle.
Absolutely.
Getting out of town on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to Parkersburg or wherever they may host it. So, thank you.
Moving on to the city clerk tab.
I have, I have a real quick question. I also don't see micro grant funding for city council. Is there a law?
或者其他 contributions.
Okay, gotcha. City clerk.
City clerk, in the same way, was sent to the council chair. It's under your purview, not mine, and it is flat. Any questions about that? The mayor's tab. It is also essentially flat. You'll note that the, we are not funding the third executive assistant position. It is authorized but unfunded, which means that it's still listed as a position, but it does not have funding with it. We're going to do our best to manage the mayor's office with fewer people. You'll also see that there was an increase in the contracted services line that is 2,300-101, about the middle of the page, for $121,000 increase, and that is the security contract for the gentleman at the front.
Ah.
With the metal detectors that are there. But otherwise, the mayor's office budget is flat.
Questions on the mayor's budget? Um, you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Or a statement. I was contacted by two residents, specifically because it was brought up currently, this is a great time to bring it up, because we have FaceTime with you. Regarding the parking spots, there were, I guess, two formerly public available 15-minute parking slots in the front of City Hall, available prior to us taking on the security personnel. And then two parking slots have been labeled just for security. And so I've had two residents contact me and say that they were really put out by that, because they're having trouble finding parking to pay their stuff at City Hall. And they asked me to bring it up. Is it possible, do we still have two parking spots out front for the, our security personnel?
There are two spots out front, yes.
Okay. Could, so I'll just advocate for the, the residents. Perhaps it could be reduced to one parking spot, so we share the security personnel and the public's need to find convenient parking. But I'm sure that having a, a security car close to City Hall is also necessary for emergency purposes. So I think it's important for them to have one parking space at minimum. But I can also empathize that the loss of a part, of two parking spots does make it more difficult to get to City Hall. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have one or two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
It, it's really just related to the positions. I know you've indicated before that you do intend to fill the city manager position. And then the senior advisor to the mayor, that looks like a new position, but I did note that the salary is the same as what the office of drug control or the name, is that going to be the same position, or will it be something different?
We changed the title to more accurately reflect what Ms. Rayder is doing.
Sure.
So.
That's fair. Yeah, she's definitely not just advising on drug control, I understand that. And then what is the chief data officer position?
Again, in the way that the, we had an innovation director.
Mm-hmm.
We changed the title to more accurately reflect what the person would be doing.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike?
Moving on.
Yes.
The insurance program tab, as we talked about, this is a line for what we spend on health insurance for our city employees. And we, the big change here is that we're going to try to accurately reflect what we anticipate it will be in the coming year, rather than under budget. And so you'll see that that is $2.1 million higher, because that's what we think it'll actually be.
Any questions on insurance? Moving on.
To the finance tab. Again, this is relatively flat. You'll see a slight increase, and that's because one of the public works employees, the permit tech, was moved from public works into finance as a way to try to have some better efficiency. And that's what the increase is.
Any questions for the finance tab or the mayor?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Under, one of the things that I noticed about the budget is throughout the different departments, there were general decreases in, in like postage or printing, et cetera. One of the things in this department on line 2110-101, under telephone, it's a, it's, the telephone budget has been cut in half, in, in theory. How, how were you able to reduce the, the phone fees? I, curious. I appreciate the efficiency, and I'm wondering, how did you do it?
Yeah, I didn't do it.
Yeah.
It was, it was, the department heads submit these budgets based on what they think they're actually going to spend. So they look at the bills.
Okay.
And they project into the future, and our finance team works with each of those department heads to say, what do you think is actually going to be? The mayor wants an accurate budget. And so we really worked hard to be accurate.
Yeah, instead of rounding. Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Municipal, municipal court tab is also flat. Any questions about it? Human resources is also flat. Reduced to part-time position, and otherwise it is relatively flat. They're doing a great job. To the purchasing tab, sorry to continue to share that it's also flat. These positions are people that have been there, that are doing good work, continue to be there, and it's flat. Department of Technology. I'll give everyone a chance to catch up to make sure that I'm not going too quickly. Good?
Can I ask a question? Under, whatever type we're on, purchasing, the grants manager, is that the person that writes the grants for the city?
We, it's a team effort to write grants at the city. I, I want to make sure that I give credit to all the places it's due. It happens inside of the departments. It happens in the mayor's office. It happens in, in the purchasing department. So the grants manager is the one that facilitates the paperwork that comes in and out. She also has a role in helping write some of the grants, you know, send them in, but then also when that paperwork comes back, administering the money back out.
So each department has, or has somebody that can write a grant for something?
I think that would probably be an overstatement that each department has.
I mean, not necessarily like a person, but they have somebody that's acclimated and could, could be familiar with writing a grant, and then go to this person?
Yes, this, this person certainly helped, will help every department.
Okay.
Right? So they would coordinate with the police, the fire, whoever, and the mayor's office to make sure we get on the same page. And then this is where the grants administrator is housed. We're on to the Department of Technology. This is relatively flat. You know, the delta of 51,000, I'll draw your attention to the last line, the capital outlay equipment, which is line 4590-105. It's a reduction of $50,000 because the workstation refresh is complete, and so they don't need the money beyond that, so that's why it's lower. I would like to point on the next page, you'll see that there's a system administrator position that is authorized but unfunded. I am hopeful that we can finish the year, June 30th, in a better position than we are today, at which time I want to fund this position, to give them a systems administrator. Cybersecurity is a real and present danger. It is something that we need to continue to spend money on. You should anticipate in future years that this is an area that the city's going to have to spend money on. Cybersecurity is going to affect all of us, and so I guess a heads up to say, I'm going to try to fill that, fund that position that's currently authorized. Compass, it's a fantastic program. It is a flat budget. They're doing good work.
Could be a good time to remind everyone that next week is Compass Restaurant Week.
Please, Compass Restaurant Week. Thank you, yes. Go eat at the restaurants where they're doing that. Human Relations Commission is a flat budget. Ms. Rumball.
I do have questions.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I go ahead, because I'm a.
We'll let the attorney talk about the city attorney tab first, if it's okay.
Well, it's.
Yeah, no problem.
It's not that, I just, I'll be, I'll be rather brief.
I'm being fun, so.
Thank you. I noticed that the city attorney position is not funded. Is there a reason for that?
Yes. Can I give you the overview of this budget and then you?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
In the city attorney's budget, obviously, Mr. Dameron has moved from being a full-time city employee to a contracted city, acting city attorney. All right? You'll see that the deduction in the salary of wages of employees for restricted payouts is down, because we are not anticipating further retirements, which is what happened with Mr. Dameron. He is now the acting city attorney, and you'll see that that line is funded down in the next section, the professional services line. And so Mr. Dameron is our acting city attorney and being funded through that line. We've also added in this budget an extra assistant city attorney. We anticipate needing more legal services as we continue to pursue people that have vacant homes, that aren't enforcing our codes. All of those things that we anticipate will happen, right? We think that we're going to need more legal work to collect our unpaid dues, for instance. We have taxes that I outlined for you that approach $15 million that we would like to. collect, and doing that is going to require legal action. And so that's why we've added the second assistant. We've reduced the restricted payouts because of Mr. Dameron and moved funding down to the contracted services. We also added extra money into the professional services because we anticipate more litigation as we do things like enforce the BNO taxes that we're owed, as we do things like tear down vacant buildings with emergency orders. We anticipate that some property owners will sue us, and so we're going to need more reserves to make sure we defend our rights and pursue that money that we're.
Any questions, City Attorney?
Yes, I do have questions. What was the salary for the City Attorney?
I could go back and look, but I think probably approximately $120,000.
I think that's probably about right. And then what is the salary for the assistant city attorney?
Again, you can do the math by looking at.
I can't do mental math like that.
Okay. If you look to the second page, you'll see that there were three at $262,000. So let's call that approximately $85,000.
Okay.
Correct me if the math is wrong.
I would not be able to correct you if the math was wrong. Okay, so those two positions combined are roughly the same as contracting those services out, right? I mean, that's, the math is not right, but if we're saying 200,000 for contracting out services, then wouldn't that really be an increase of $80,000 over what we would be paying an in-house city attorney?
I didn't follow your question about the math. What I'll say is that the total legal services budget is going up by $141,000, that the acting city attorney currently is budgeting the professional services. We've added more money on that for future services that we think we're going to need that are beyond that $120,000, so an extra $80,000 in outside legal council help, and added a assistant city attorney in there, so.
So, okay, I understand that. But why would we not hire a city attorney at a lower amount? Because it seems to me that, you know, this, so let's say we've got a city attorney, which we basically are going to because we've got the contracted services line, right? So there will be someone doing that work, whether it's a.
We have a city attorney. It's Scott Dameron.
Correct. And so he is doing that work, whether he's being paid outside council rates or a salary, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it would seem to me that if we are adding a third assistant city attorney, that those four people ought to be able to handle, you know, things like lawsuits arising out of demolition or prosecution of liens or things like that, because in fact, that was the rationale for adding the second city attorney position about, I don't know, probably 10, 12 years ago. Somebody may know more than I do. I just, it does not sit well to me to say that we are going to anticipate an increase in outside litigation expenses when we will have, you know, with our legal secretaries, we will have an in-house team of four, six people. Why are we estimating that increase in outside council fees?
Because we anticipate getting sued more.
I know, but is there a reason that our in-house team cannot handle that litigation?
I would say that there's two separate things. I'm going to really attempt to answer the question I think you're asking, so if I'm not, you can come back. The third assistant city attorney could just do collections of outstanding fees that are owed to us, and that'd be a full-time job.
Which is what we were told the second city attorney was going to do when they were added several years ago.
Okay. I wasn't here several years ago.
I understand that. I understand that.
And so we need to collect the $15 million that are out there. And I'm confident that we will need more help inside this legal office here.
Which it looks like we're going to have because we're going to have two more attorneys in there, right?
Right. We're going to have three assistants, and I think that they will be tasked fully.
Okay.
And then I think on top of that, I think that beyond the capability of the people that work in that office, we're going to need some specialty expertise as it pertains to municipal law that they may not have, that we're going to need to seek outside counsel to the tune of $80,000-ish that I've budgeted. Again, please remember, this is a budget, it's a plan.
Yes, I know, I know it's a budget.
So if it's less, that's great, but I have budgeted for being able to go out to a outside firm to help us as we get sued for tearing down a building, right, that they believe that we shouldn't have. Or the, we have the, we'll talk more about the landfill, right, where we have some significant legal issues ahead of us. And so I think we're going to need some experts.
Have you looked at how insurance coverage would factor into that? Because there's insurance coverage for a lot of those types of claims, and we would only be looking at the deductible, correct?
That would be fantastic if the insurance would do that, yes. I have looked at it.
Okay. And you still anticipate that, that increase?
Yes, this is what I believe to be an accurate and realistic forward-looking budget. I hope that we come in under budget, to be very clear. I hope that we spend less, but yes, this is what I anticipate to happen.
Really, I just have one last question, but it was my understanding that Scott's term as acting city attorney, and understand this, I wish we could keep Scott Dameron forever because I think he's uniquely qualified for that position. But it was my understanding that under the charter, Scott could only be acting city attorney for a total of 120 days. Is that not the case?
It is the case that I can have an act, any acting position for 120 days, yes, before naming a full-time one.
So is he planning to come back full-time?
All of our personnel discussions are not subject to what we're going to talk about today.
Yes, I understand that. Okay, but if you are planning on $200,000 in professional services based on the fact that Scott Dameron is going to be our acting city attorney, my question is not, is it going to be Scott? My question is, will we hire another acting city attorney or will we hire an internal city attorney?
Within 120 days, whatever that comes out to be, call it another 60 days, I'll name, hopefully, a full-time city attorney, right? And whether that person is an employee of the city or a contracted city attorney, which we could do, it'll come from one or the other. And if it, if it is still contracted services, the money's right where it needs to be. If we hire somebody in-house, I'll come back to you for a budget revision and move that money from contracted services back to a city employee. Those decisions haven't been made yet.
I would hope that if the decision was made to contract out these services, that that contracted person would agree to work for a rate that was equal to what it would cost us to have an in-house city attorney.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
No problem.
I have a quick question.
Thanks, ma'am.
You had mentioned that you anticipate future being sued more often for various reasons.
I hope we don't, but yes, I think that there's a chance.
Yes, I, me too. So will each, so if we have four attorneys in general speaking, will each one of those have a different specialty to focus on?
No, not necessarily. Our city attorneys do a lot of things, from zoning and planning to other things. And so they, they have assignments of duties, right? We will make sure that they collect the taxes that go to, you know, settle the disputes, that, you know, the zoning, the BZA, right? Like, we have people assigned to these things. So they won't be specialty people necessarily, but they will have duties assigned inside that office to spread the workload across them appropriately.
Okay.
Any other questions? Planning and development is flat.
I'm new, so I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And I could have asked ahead of time.
I apologize, that's what we're here for.
But, so we have the director and then the planner 321. What exactly do the 321 do?
I'm sorry, Ms. Ollie, can you point me to what you're asking about?
Under the positions, like what do, does each position do as far as?
Oh, I see. On the second page, planner, planner 3, planner 2, those are classifications for different levels of expertise. So someone might come in as a planner 1, and then elevate to planner 2, planner 3, as they gain more experience or certifications. It's just a stratified way to talk about their expertise, which is why you see the pay differential also goes from an A13 to an A14 to an A17 as people advance and gain more knowledge or skill or capability.
Okay.
Junior people and senior folks, if you will.
HPD.
Under the police department, obviously, I've talked a lot about our priorities of public safety. That starts with our police and our fire department. As we developed this budget, we said that we don't want to cut police or fire, that we want them to have a flat budget. And so that was a going-in argument. This budget is essentially flat. I'll give a caveat that as one of the things that I learned over the last certainly year is that the jail bill is a significant concern for a lot of people and that we haven't been able to enforce the law, so I've heard, because of the jail bill. I hope we arrest nobody, but I included an extra $250,000 in the jail bill so that when we talk to the sheriffs, we talk to the policemen, we talk to whoever, the jail bill isn't in consideration. I hope that this number doesn't get filled, but it is not going to be an excuse for why we don't enforce the law inside the city. And so outside of that, it's a relatively flat budget. I will also say that the budget principle that holds here, again, coming back to accurate, I don't believe that our, let me say it differently. I want to reflect the best available data we have, the historic trends and the current realities. And in the past, we have authorized and funded 108 policemen, and then we haven't filled those 108 policemen. We've steadily gone from, you know, 80 to 90 to 94, and it's moved up. And then when those positions aren't filled, it created excess in the police budget that was typically then swept away and put to some other part of a city priority. And so the police may have had an approved budget of, say, $15.5 million, but they actually only spent 14.7. And so there was a 700, $800,000 difference that the end of the year they couldn't spend. And so what I want to do is accurately say, this is what you're going to get, and put it in the categories that you're really going to do. Tell me what you really want, and then from there, we'll move on. And if we need to adjust and be flexible somewhere down the road, we will, but at least we'll accurately reflect what's happening here. So the first line, you'll see that there's a reduction of $363,000. That is because we are still authorized for 108 police officers, but we are not funding all of those extra positions. So that 363 has moved down into the budget, and the police department will have the ability to fill positions as they're able to. So it will not restrict our policemen from recruiting, hiring, training, and deploying our police officers. We will make sure that that happens. What this does do is it ends the end-of-the-year game of they were funded but not filled, and we're sweeping that money away. So that's why there's a big difference there. You'll also see increases for restricted payouts because people are going to retire. And then in line 1070-105, the contributions to pensions, that's in the top half there, where you'll see a delta of $362,000. That is a state-mandated number that we don't come up with, that the actual auditors look at it and determine what amount goes to the pension. It goes directly to the pension fund, and that's going to increase for next year because of the demographics of our, of our workforce. Those are the substantive changes to the first page. On the second page, you'll see under the capital outlay line, which is line 4590, there's a delta of 165. We've paid off some body cams, and we don't have a current plan in the budget to fund vehicles, but we know that they need vehicles and the police have a very real need for vehicles. And what I'm very hopeful of is that we've allocated in FY '26 $16.1 million for our policemen. And what I have told Chief Watkins is that I am committed to letting him spend that $16.1 number without sweeping money at the end of the year if we're on budget. I want to be very clear about this because the terms matter, right? When we budget, that doesn't mean we have that $16 million on day one. Just like on day one, I don't have 78 overall, we're budgeting $16 million, and that depends on what we're able to collect. And so I don't want anyone to get the impression that if we don't collect the $78 million, we don't collect enough, we won't spend 16. But if we do collect, I anticipate that we will spend it. And I only make that caveat because I don't want someone to come back and say, you told us this and then you did that. We're budgeting for 16. I want the police department to spend 16. I want to keep it flat, allow them to have agency inside of their department to spend it on the things that they think they need to keep us safe. And then I gave them the extra $250,000, so that's not an excuse for not enforcing the law. Happy to answer any questions about the police budget.
Mr. Chair. I assume you're aware that last year, this council took affirmative steps to reduce the city's cost for the jail bill by eliminating some ordinances that were duplicative of state ordinances as well?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so why the increase in the jail bill?
So that it's not an excuse for not arresting people.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. It just, as, as we're looking at things like, you know, cuts to the animal shelter and the elimination of the microgrant programs and, and things like that, because, and yes, I understand this as a budget, but I also understand that once things are cut, they are very rarely put back as the year progresses. And so padding the jail bill just so that it won't give people an excuse for not arresting people is, that's a hard pill to swallow when we're going to have to tell nonprofits and essential services in our community that we don't have the funding for you because we have a hypothetical increased jail bill cost.
Right. I told the police department that if this is not money that they can then sweep in to pay for, for cars, that the $250,000 is just for the jail bill. If we don't spend it, it won't be there, right? They don't get to spend it on extra things, right? That 250, that one item in there, right, is simply for their ability to know that they can do their job without having some boogeyman in the distance that says, we're going to have to pay for a jail bill.
Have we had trouble paying the jail bill in past years?
It appears so, yes.
By how much?
I don't know.
Which one's the jail bill? Which line?
Thank you.
It's line 2300-101, contracted services. Other questions you have about police?
Just kind of to throw this out there, to also kind of talk about it and get us all talking about it in a public way. When we voted to remove some of those municipal laws that were duplicative in state code as Councilwoman Walling just referenced, very eloquently, by the way, you are incredible.
No.
I believe, I'd asked the question at the time, how much money are we going to save by removing these duplicative bill, municipal laws? And I think Chief Watkins at the time said something like, maybe $5,000 a month, something like that. So if we, so if our jail bill at the time is somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000, does anybody have an idea of what our, our average monthly jail bill is now? Do you, do you know Mayor Farrell?
No, I can get back to you.
Okay. So we're, we're anticipating an, a significant increase from like $5,000 a month to maybe, I can't do the math on that, a lot, five times, so it'll be 60. It's almost like a 10, like a tenfold increase is what it looks like. That's, that's rough.
Yeah. I hope we don't spend any of it.
Okay.
Just to be very clear.
Yeah.
This is, this is a, maybe a deviation from my principle of being as accurate as possible because I don't know what it's going to be.
Okay, okay.
Right? I hope we spend none of it.
Okay.
If we spend none of it, it's not going to be spent on police cars, right? It's not going to be spent on overtime. It's going to be spent on the jail bill, or it's not going to be spent.
Okay.
And then if we have extra money because we haven't had to arrest people, we will come back and allocate it in a flexible, tight budget on things that are priorities for the city, but it won't be an excuse.
Okay.
Can I, I'm sorry.
No, do you have a question?
Just a quick one.
Oh, yeah.
So just for clarification purposes, what does the jail bill cover? Like, what does that money go for?
When we arrest somebody on city charges, it sends them to the jail, and there's a fee that we get charged by the county when that happens. I don't know exactly what it is, but let's just say it's $63 a day, right, that we get charged for putting people in jail. So if you put someone in jail for 30 days for violating a city ordinance, the county sends you a bill.
Kind of like staying at a hotel.
Yeah.
Easy.
And, and I do just want to clarify for the benefit of the, the folks that are new and to Ms. Blau's point, we only pay if someone is arrested on a city ordinance, which is why last year, we eliminated city ordinances that had a nearly, an identical or. we eliminated city ordinances that had a nearly, an identical or nearly identical counterpart in the state code, because if our officers arrest people and charge them under state code, then we are not responsible for that cost.
Oh, okay.
And also to further that point, a new law had been passed on a state level that said if you have a municipal charge, you cannot bring it up, you cannot charge them on the duplicative state charge. You have to charge them on a municipal charge if you have the same law. So if you have a DUI law municipally and you have a DUI law on state, they wouldn't be charged with the DUI state law, they'd be charged with the DUI municipal law. That is why, like, we tweak things around.
Oh, okay.
So they did away with some of the municipal charges?
Correct, correct.
So that we wouldn't have to pay them.
It was very strategic.
Yeah.
Yep. That's a good idea. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions about the police?
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
On line 3450-101, we have uniforms and safety gear. We have an increase of 30,000. Typically, I've seen Chief Watkins come in, and we've given different things, and they've had grants with no match to pay for different things. Is this an anticipation that we won't have grant funding to pay for uniforms or that said safety gear?
We're going to use grants as much as possible.
Right.
To pay for as much as we can. I can't tell you specifically what safety gear that the Police Department put in for this $30,000, but we will certainly pursue all the grants that we can.
And I have another question, just because you'd mentioned cars. So would purchasing of the police cars, does that fall under the capital outlay?
Yeah.
Equipment? But so there's, there's like no capital outlay equipment budget. It's like...
Correct.
So...
We're going to try to find other ways to pay for cars, or they're not going to have cars.
Okay.
And again, we can come back for revisions.
Okay.
Right, based on whatever we need. You can rest assured, public safety is job number one.
Okay.
Right? The Police Department will have everything they need to do their job, including cars.
Okay.
Right? I just haven't currently budgeted for new ones because we don't, that isn't the highest priority that we have for them right now.
Okay. So we should take into consideration that there is no budget for cars. It's like a $200,000 decrease. I don't know if cars were previously budgeted into it in years past, but there would be a, previously there would be a significant capital outlay budget of a couple of hundred thousand. That's been removed out of this budget of about 200,000. And instead, you could kind of think of it, maybe, I would analogize it this way, is that 200,000 has shifted to a potential higher jail bill. So like, it's mostly a flat budget with just some things have moved around in priorities.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Can I, may I?
Yeah.
So Councilwoman Rumbaw, when I first came in, there was really no plan for the fleet of our Police Department. The Crown Victorious were deplorable. They were an embarrassment. And over time, over the last several years, we have basically had a program where we're replenishing the fleet about five cars, if able to spend, a year. So getting the SUVs, getting them equipped, you've seen the Stevens Auto, we're buying this, and then it takes this much to equip it with the lights, the cage, the everything else. So the fleet is always going to be ongoing. You know, there's going to be a couple cars that need to retire, there's going to be a couple that need to be added to the fleet. But the fleet overall is in better shape than it was when I came in. Again, I think there's still a need to retire and replenish cars in the HPD as needed. But just to give you that part of where it was and where it is now, it's much better than it was.
Excellent.
So...
Time for your horse cops, Tia.
Yeah, that's right. I don't know if anybody, another time, I know this is kind of off topic, but I'm actually, Huntington used to have patrols on horses. Does anybody, anybody grow up here and remember that?
Counties, yes.
It was, I think it was awesome. I know, I know it's kind of a, it's a, the budget doesn't reflect it, but I'll just plant that little seed of how awesome would it be? And I think it would also be a thing that would attract officers from around the country because it's kind of hard to find quality officers, which would bring me to my next question. How do we attract skilled, fantastic, experienced, family, protectors of the peace?
Equestrians.
Equestrians in our community? How about we bring back the horses? Because a lot of municipalities can't afford that throughout our country, and maybe we're in a position, Huntington is unique, where we could, maybe under Farrell's guidance. And that would, that would help beef up our service force. Anyway, that's just one of those, you know, out of the box thinking. But that actually brings me to my next question. You mentioned that you wanted the actual budget based on the number of officers we have. And so when I look at the second page, I see we have 110 total budgeted sworn, but minimum will be at 98. Is that correct?
Correct.
So instead of 108 officers, we are hoping to get 110?
Yeah, the chief and the deputy chief.
And you got a chief and deputy chief that make up that.
Okay, they're not, they're not including that.
Correct.
Okay, I see. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on to the fire budget. If you go to the second page, you'll see the last bottom right corner that this is actually exactly flat. And so it's a flat budget. There are obviously differences. I'll draw your attention back to page one. The top line shows an increase in change of $411,000. That is a contractual increase based on the contract they have with us, that that's where that number comes from. If you go down to the second page, you'll see that, I'll draw your attention back to the line 345-101, uniform safety gear, which is in the top section of page two. And there's a $410,000 decrease. This is turnout gear that they are currently trying to order. And once they order it and they have it in this fiscal year, they don't need it for next year, which is why that's decreasing. I'll draw your attention only because they may not actually order it this fiscal year. They're going through a process, and they may do it next year. So if that happens, we'll encumber the money to the following year, and there'll, of course, be a budget revision to show that it's moved from one year to the X, and you'll know what it's doing. But it's the safety gear that they need, that they're ordering, and they're taking their time and due diligence to find the right stuff.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we still planning to keep them with two sets for each firefighter turnout gear? I know that was something that, there's a lot of research to back up, their own safety from like a lung cancer inhalant.
The carcinogens.
Yeah. I know we managed to get them to two sets. Is that the plan moving forward, to keep them there?
I don't have any plans to change what Chief Fuller wants.
Okay.
Right? He put together this budget, and I've committed to help him. It's a flat budget, and he's telling me is what he needs.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we were visiting the news station, I had an opportunity to ask the guys a couple of questions. In line 2130-101, under utilities, I know like internet is paid for here, and internet is paid for HPD. Do we pay for the internet for folks to have access to like streaming while they're there 24-hour shifts at each fire station?
I don't know. I can find out.
They had mentioned that they split the cost between each individual fireperson, and I find that to be wild, that if we're paying for internet here and at the police station, that we should pay for internet at, you know, each fire station. I mean, they're in living capabilities, 24-hour shifts, that they should be able to at least have the luxury of streaming, you know, Netflix or whatever to chill out after the calls that they go on, or, you know what I mean, or whatever. I just think that that's something that we should take on at minimum.
To, may I, to jump in on that point, I would think that the firefighters would have to have access to email so that they could know about scheduled trainings and other things that they would, at minimum.
Right.
Have access to. So I would be very surprised if we are not paying for the internet, but to hear that they pulled their own money.
Yeah.
That, that seems, that seems strange.
Right. I would love to find that out.
Let's fact check that. We'll figure it out.
Internet. I do have also another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Under automobile supplies fuel, I see that there's a modest decrease, sorry, it's 3430-101 on the second page, there's a decrease of about $8,000, which is for fuel, and which, I mean, I also hope that the gas prices go down. But I'd actually, I'd, I saw something on the internet that when people, I wanted to confirm that we have gas-powered emergency equipment and not electric vehicles? And my question, because I've heard that there are some issues with electric vehicles responding to emergencies because you have to wait for them to charge, and I wanted to confirm that we have gas-powered.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions about the fire department?
Public works.
Been at this for a while. Do you all need a break?
That wouldn't be bad.
We...
Quick.
Let's take about a five-minute recess, Mayor. I know everybody can get up and stretch.
Why don't we come back at 10:30?
Be at 10:30.
10:30.
10:30.
I believe.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Public Works.
So the Public Works section is, again, essentially flat for all material purposes. Um, you will see that, um, some of the restricted payouts are less. There's an increase, uh, in litigation fees because of the landfill. I mentioned before, we have a, a, uh, significant liability with that landfill that we're gonna have to engage outside council to deal with, the DEP. And I'll go to the first tab of inspections and permits. We talked already about the difference in the, um, personal services section because the permit tech moved to finance. So that was why there was a reduction to $52,000. There's also, uh, in the capital outlay, you'll see, um, just none planned in FY26. So that's why the $30,000 there, which equates to the total of, um, $79,000. Any questions about inspections and permits?
Um, Mr. Chair, are, are you gonna address the landfill issue later? I don't wanna jump the gun, but also.
Uh, not specifically, but I'm happy to answer questions about it.
Uh, could you just maybe give us a rundown?
Yeah, just what's going on with the.
Yeah.
Nutshell.
Yeah, so it, it's outside this budget, outside of these legal fees, but you know that Deeds Hollow and Guyan Dot, uh, was stopped accepting refuse in the mid-'90s. Uh, and when you do that, you have to close the landfill. And, you know, there are technical ways to do that, to prevent leachate, which is when water hits the trash and it flows through, that becomes leachate, uh, and to protect the water, uh, and the surrounding area. Uh, that closure has not happened. And so we've been on notice from the state DEP for many years that we need to take action, and they have ramped up their enforcement efforts, and we're trying to respond. Did that answer your question?
So this, this has been an ongoing issue for previous years?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this goes back many years. The action should've probably started happening in the mid-'90s.
That's my question, is wonder why it wasn't closed.
Yeah, I have.
Previous. I think that the DEP is way more aggressive now than they were in the '90s.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm new. Had it been brought to council about this before?
I don't recall this ever coming before council the last four years.
In my tenure, there, there may have been a light mention, oops. Sorry. There may have been a light mention of this set issue, but never a plan, never to the extent of what it would cost to close it or what the fines are levied against the city for it not being closed. Those things were never really discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
But honestly, sometimes it's cheaper to pay the fine than to shut it down, even though it might not be the right thing to do. Or sometimes where municipalities, we've been in other situations where just paying the fee is less than.
And was that an option before, that, that anybody remembers?
Not, not through our budget and, and not through a resolution or anything like that.
Right.
Um, so, again, um, that was kind of a thing that had been discussed, I guess, on that side of the hallway. It was never really brought to council over the years.
Yeah, so let me say this, that I anticipate for at least 10 years, the city's been on notice. Uh, we have taken action to, uh, address some of that to understand what the scope of the problem is. In today's dollars, I anticipate it being between somewhere between 20 and 30 million dollars will be required to close the landfill. And that, um, I have been engaging, uh, with our legal counsel, with our state legislature, uh, to try to find solutions for what we can do, uh, to do this, because there's not an easy answer, and it's gonna be really costly. And we need to do something.
One question I have, just briefly. If that, in fact, is the amount now, if done previously, could have been a cheaper amount?
Oh, sure.
Sure.
No, I think.
There, there's the big issue.
I think 10 years ago, probably could've been done for something like 16 million dollars.
Right.
Well, you gotta keep in mind Huntington wasn't in the place it was financially 15 years ago, that it is even today.
But it's very unfortunate, because this could've posed a serious safety hazard.
Oh, this is a huge burden at this point.
Throughout.
For your, for your district.
I mean, this is a serious, I mean, this is my district, that this is a serious safety hazard if everything's running downhill. And I wonder why, I mean, it's neither here nor there now, but if we had all of this COVID money, why could some of that not have been used towards that?
Yeah, respectfully.
Yeah.
I'd say that this is not the subject of what I'm gonna talk about today.
I know, okay. I'm just.
Yes.
This, this falls into the category of can kick down the road, much like the sanitary issues, the stormwater issues and everything that we've allocated all that money to. And, you know, uh, it's, I don't remember it ever coming up either, so it's one of those things that was out there. I guess the question that I have as it relates to maybe to this budget or to, you know, down the road, is there a way that we could finance that in any way so that we could go ahead and effectuate the closure, but then pay it off over time?
Yeah, I'm looking at all the options.
Okay.
Right now, like.
Sure.
It's an enormous.
Sure.
It's enormous junk. Um, I'm hopeful that our state legislators, um, have a way to help us.
And also, just because I thought maybe Mike's point might've been garbled as we were talking over one another. Stacy, your question was, why was the ARPA money not allocated to that? And Mike, were you saying that?
I can, I can speak to that. So, when, when we were talking about the ARPA money, um, and things that came through the city, um, only certain things met the criteria. Now, I can't speak to whether it did or not, um, or would have. Um, a lot of the things that I proposed, there were some things that I suggested that did not fit the earmark of the criteria of that money, because it had to be spent on certain things. So, uh, closing a landfill may have not met the criteria. So I, I can't speak 100% to it, but I'm just saying, um, it was for more recovery efforts from, from COVID. And there was a laundry list, the book was probably this thick. Um, so I'm not gonna even begin to speak to what can and can't, could or could not have been spent in that book. So, um, my, my suggestion is that it, it may not have been, so.
And those were federal rules, so we, and if we didn't follow the federal rules, we would have to pay that money back.
Correct.
And that's what some other municipalities around West Virginia, they mishandled their ARPA funding, and so now they have to pay their, uh, in the red, back to the federal government.
That's why we had a dedicated personnel position to make sure every T was crossed, every I was dotted, that, that we didn't extend ourselves or get ourselves into a situation from the city standpoint of, of having to pay that money back or funding a project, and then all of a sudden the money's gone and we've gotta reimburse or anything to that knowledge, right? So, um, again, I hope that clarifies some of that for you, Stacy J.
And I would, I would like to also echo, uh, Councilwoman Walling's suggestion. If we could do something to address it right away, I would be absolutely in favor of that, because your community safety is incredibly, all of our community safety is important. So, uh, again, from 2020 on, I don't remember anybody saying anything about this being an issue. So hearing that it's an issue now, that's definitely something we need to take care of, so.
And, Mr. Chair, just a thought, um, of Ms. Mount mentioning, um, if we paid a fine, um, what's, can you give new members of council, um, the amount that if, when, it has to come before council, dollar amount to be approved? Is it 15?
25,000.
25,000? So if it was anything under that, that was a fee that was paid, we wouldn't have seen it? But anything over 25,000 has to come before council to be approved, just so you all know.
So you're saying that, under Williams' administration?
I'm just saying.
We, we don't know.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know, but there was, just, I'm just saying that if there was a fee, if it was under that amount.
Under 25,000.
And also for new members to know that anything under that amount doesn't come before us, anything over that amount comes before us.
So, and, and my time here, it was 15.
Okay.
Um, that the mayor could spend anything under 15,000 without coming before council. Before, I may be the only one, um, that it was increased, um, man, probably seven, eight years ago, I'm guessing, um, that, that he had a, a spendable balance that did not have to come in front of council.
Any other questions about that? Onto the building maintenance tab. You'll see, again, this is relatively flat. Uh, there is a, uh, increase in restricted payouts for retirements. You'll also see that we increased $100,000, uh, in the line of capital outlays, which is 458-101 at the bottom, um, shows $72,000 increase. There was a offsetting, there were increased by $100,000 for repairs to city property and decreased it by $27,500 for a one-time expense for a fence. This is a, um, building maintenance fund that we keep to repair city property. Any questions? Traffic engineering. Again, it's relatively flat. You'll notice, again, the line for restricted payouts, uh, 1030-106 is slightly up, uh, and then, uh, the line for utilities is $80,000 higher, and that is utilities for the lights at Halre Boulevard.
Oh.
We're, we're back from our intermission. I believe.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Public Works.
So the Public Works section is, again, essentially flat for all material purposes. Um, you will see that, um, some of the restricted payouts are less. There's an increase, uh, in litigation fees because of the landfill. I mentioned before, we have a, a, uh, significant liability with that landfill that we're gonna have to engage outside council to deal with, the DEP. And I'll go to the first tab of inspections and permits. We talked already about the difference in the, um, personal services section because the permit tech moved to finance, so that was why there was a reduction to $52,000. There's also, uh, in the capital outlay, you'll see, um, just none planned in FY26, so that's why the $30,000 there, which equates to the total of, um, $79,000. Any questions about inspections and permits?
Um, Mr. Chair, are, are you gonna address the landfill issue later? I don't wanna jump the gun, but also.
Uh, not specifically, but I'm happy to answer questions about it.
Uh, could you just maybe give us a rundown?
Yeah, just what's going on with the.
Yeah.
Nutshell.
Yeah, so it, it's outside this budget, outside of these legal fees, but you know that Deeds Hollow and Guyan Dot, uh, was stopped accepting refuse in the mid-'90s. Uh, and when you do that, you have to close the landfill. And, you know, there are technical ways to do that, to prevent leachate, which is when water hits the trash and it flows through, that becomes leachate, uh, and to protect the water, uh, and the surrounding area. Uh, that closure has not happened. And so we've been on notice from the state DEP for many years that we need to take action, and they have ramped up their enforcement efforts, and we're trying to respond. Did that answer your question?
So this, this has been an ongoing issue for previous years?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this goes back many years. The action should've probably started happening in the mid-'90s.
That's my question, is wonder why it wasn't closed.
Yeah, I have.
The previous.
I think that the DEP is way more aggressive now than they were in the '90s.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm new. Had it been brought to council about this before?
I don't recall this ever coming before council the last four years.
In my tenure, there, there may have been a light mention, oops. Sorry. There may have been a light mention of this set issue, but never a plan, never to the extent of what it would cost to close it or what the fines are levied against the city for it not being closed. Those things were never really discussed.
Okay.
Yeah.
But honestly, sometimes it's cheaper to pay the fine than to shut it down, even though it might not be the right thing to do. Or sometimes where municipalities, we've been in other situations where just paying the fee is less than.
And was that an option before, that, that anybody remembers?
Not, not through our budget and, and not through a resolution or anything like that.
Right.
Um, so, again, um, that was kind of a thing that had been discussed, I guess, on that side of the hallway. It was never really brought to council over the years.
Yeah, so let me say this, that I anticipate for at least 10 years, the city's been on notice. Uh, we have taken action to, uh, address some of that to understand what the scope of the problem is. In today's dollars, I anticipate it being between somewhere between 20 and 30 million dollars will be required to close the landfill. And that, um, I have been engaging, uh, with our legal counsel, with our state legislature, uh, to try to find solutions for what we can do, uh, to do this, because there's not an easy answer, and it's gonna be really costly. And we need to do something.
One question I have, just briefly. If that, in fact, is the amount now, if done previously, could've have been a cheaper amount?
Oh, sure.
Sure.
No, I think.
There, there's the big issue.
I think 10 years ago, probably could've been done for something like 16 million dollars.
Right.
Well, you gotta keep in mind Huntington wasn't in the place it was financially 15 years ago, that it is even today.
But it's very unfortunate, because this could've posed a serious safety hazard.
Oh, this is a huge burden at this point.
Throughout.
For your, for your district.
I mean, this is a serious, I mean, this is my district, that this is a serious safety hazard if everything's running downhill. And I wonder why, I mean, it's neither here nor there now, but if we had all of this COVID money, why could some of that not have been used towards that?
Yeah, respectfully.
Yeah.
I'd say that this is not the subject of what I'm gonna talk about today.
I know, okay. I'm just.
Yes.
This, this falls into the category of can kick down the road, much like the sanitary issues, the stormwater issues and everything that we've allocated all that money to. And, you know, uh, it's, I don't remember it ever coming up either, so it's one of those things that was out there. I guess the question that I have as it relates to maybe to this budget or to, you know, down the road, is there a way that we could finance that in any way so that we could go ahead and effectuate the closure, but then pay it off over time?
Yeah, I'm looking at all the options.
Okay.
Right now, like.
Sure.
It's an enormous.
Sure.
It's enormous junk.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful that our state legislators, um, have a way to help us.
And also, just because I thought maybe Mike's point might've been garbled as we were talking over one another. Stacy, your question was, why was the ARPA money not allocated to that? And Mike, were you saying that?
I can, I can speak to that. So, when, when we were talking about the ARPA money, um, and things that came through the city, um, only certain things met the criteria. Now, I can't speak to whether it did or not, um, or would have. A lot of the things that I proposed, there were some things that I suggested that did not fit the earmark of the criteria of that money, because it had to be spent on certain things. So, uh, closing a landfill may have not met the criteria. So I, I can't speak 100% to it, but I'm just saying, um, it was for more recovery efforts from, from COVID. And there was a laundry list, the book was probably this thick. Um, so I'm not gonna even begin to speak to what can and can't, could or could not have been spent in that book. So, um, my, my suggestion is that it, it may not have been, so.
And those were federal rules, so we, and if we didn't follow the federal rules, we would have to pay that money back.
Correct.
And that's what some other municipalities around West Virginia, they mishandled their ARPA funding, and so now they have to pay their, uh, in the red, back to the federal government.
That's why we had a dedicated personnel position to make sure every T was crossed, every I was dotted, that, that we didn't extend ourselves or get ourselves into a situation from the city standpoint of, of having to pay that money back or funding a project, and then all of a sudden the money's gone and we've gotta reimburse or anything to that knowledge, right? So, um, again, I hope that clarifies some of that for you, Stacy J.
And I would, I would like to also echo, uh, Councilwoman Walling's suggestion. If we could do something to address it right away, I would be absolutely in favor of that, because your community safety is incredibly, all of our community safety is important. So, uh, again, from 2020 on, I don't remember anybody saying anything about this being an issue. So hearing that it's an issue now, that's definitely something we need to take care of, so.
And, Mr. Chair, just a thought, um, of Ms. Mount mentioning, um, if we paid a fine, what's, can you give new members of council, um, the amount that if, when, it has to come before council, dollar amount to be approved? Is it 15?
25,000.
25,000? So if it was anything under that, that was a fee that was paid, we wouldn't have seen it? But anything over 25,000 has to come before council to be approved, just so you all know.
So you're saying that, under Williams' administration?
I'm just saying.
We, we don't know.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know, but there was, just, I'm just saying that if there was a fee, if it was under that amount. And also for new members to know that anything under that amount doesn't come before us, anything over that amount comes before us.
So, and, and my time here, it was 15.
Okay.
Um, that the mayor could spend anything under 15,000 without coming before council. Before, I may be the only one, um, that it was increased, um, man, probably seven, eight years ago, I'm guessing, um, that, that he had a, a spendable balance that did not have to come in front of council.
Any other questions about that? Onto the building maintenance tab. You'll see, again, this is relatively flat. There is a, uh, increase in restricted payouts for retirements. You'll also see that we increased $100,000, uh, in the line of capital outlays, which is 458-101 at the bottom, um, shows $72,000 increase. There was a offsetting, there were increased it by $100,000 for repairs to city property and decreased it by $27,500 for a one-time expense for a fence. This is a, um, building maintenance fund that we keep to repair city property. Any questions? Traffic engineering. Again, it's relatively flat. You'll notice, again, the line for restricted payouts, uh, 1030-106 is slightly up, uh, and then, uh, the line for utilities is $80,000 higher, and that is utilities for the lights at Halre Boulevard.
Oh.
And I wanna point out, if I can, Mayor, uh, these tabs that we're going through on the back end of Public Works are still all Public Works. They're, they're departments within a department, if you wanna look at it that way, because they have the streets and highways, they have the city garage, they have all those for anyone new in this, if you're, if you're curious.
Until we get to contributions, it's all still Public Works?
Yeah. So, go ahead, sorry.
No, it's good. Uh, traffic engineering, is that where we were?
Yes.
Yep, sorry. Okay, so next is streets and highways. It's flat. Go to motor pool. Again, it's flat. The increase we have is for maintenance and repair in line 2170-101 is for internal maintenance for the motor pool, that we're spending more money to keep our older vehicles up. Instead of buying new vehicles, we're still working the maintenance issues, and at some point, of course, as everyone knows, it's better just to buy something new, uh, and when we can, we will. Until then, we're spending more money on repairs. Questions?
You have a question?
Yeah.
What's an example of what the, a contracted service for this department would be? Overall, not a massive increase, but related to that line item is?
Yeah, I, I don't know specifically, but if I could guess.
Yeah.
It would be, if you're working on a vehicle and our guys don't have the expertise to do it, and we'd outsource it to somebody for something.
Um, I can, I can comment to, like, the fire boat. Um, there are certain things that we can do internally, but since it's such a complex piece of machinery, uh, certain things that may have to be fixed has to be contracted out and the boat sent away to get repairs.
Yep.
I was also thinking, maybe the technology that we use to, um, to do the streets, the camera that's on the vehicles, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. That would probably be under trap, street and highways, but.
Was it street cam?
Yeah.
Or a vehicle cam? We don't have street cams.
Well, on the cars that, it ranks our city streets. It's that new technology for paving.
Oh.
Like some of the potholes.
Oh, yeah, that thing.
Street construction?
Okay.
This one is slightly more complicated, so bear with me. Uh, we'll go back to my budget principles of accurate, is the key word here. In this section, I want us to be accurate. And to do that, we have to unwind what I'm gonna call a complicated accounting system of how we think about what our, um, how we spend our money. And it looks lumpy. If you go back for the last six years, you will see increases and decreases in this section, and it's because of invoicing from the state. Our folks that do our paving, uh, we contract through the state, and then they invoice us. And so if they do it in the spring and we don't get an invoice to the fall, that passes over a fiscal year. And even though we did it in the spring, we got the invoice in the fall. We encumber the money across fiscal years, and then we realize it in a given year. And so when you look at, how much money are we actually spending, which is what I care about, this is the accurate part, what are we actually doing? The average amount, uh, for the last six years has been 2.35 million dollars. That's what I budgeted. That's how we came up with that number. We don't intend to spend less on paving. We spend, intend to spend as much as we've been spending on paving and keeping our roads right. So that was the goal. Uh, you mentioned the data-driven piece. It gets slightly more complicated, because there were four, uh, categories, you can see four categories of, in 4580-102, capital outlay for street paving, and then at the bottom line there at 105, you have other improvements to do, street paving program, right? And this is something that the prior administration was trying to do over a 10-year period and pave every road, but then that changed with this data-driven thing, because now every road doesn't need paved in 10 years. We're gonna focus more on the ones that need it, based on the data that we have, to make better decisions, to make sure the roads are all good. All of this to say, if we drill down into any of these numbers between any year, it looks lumpy. The deltas don't really matter to me. What does matter to me is the actual amount that we spent and that how much we anticipate spending next year. And so what I can assure you is that no pothole's gonna go unfilled, right? That we're gonna work hard to keep them filled and pave our streets just the way we have been and spend all of our money. The hard part's going to be contracting to do that, in my opinion. Let me give you an example. Uh, in the current year we're in, FY25, uh, this council budgeted 3.45 million dollars, right, to do paving. So far, we've spent, to, I think, Ms. Mount's point about the, um, you look at the actuals, we've spent $705,000.
Ooh.
Right?
Huge differential.
Huge differential.
Yeah.
It's the weather?
Again, I wasn't.
Sorry.
Here to know.
Sorry.
Right, what I can tell you is that when I look at the books, I see that we've not spent up to the amount, and there could be lots of reasons, from weather to late invoicing from the state, to all of these things. Uh, and so when I have tried to say, let's get to paving, we have some challenges with contracting, because there's a change at the state level in the, in the state administration through Department of Highways. And so we now have to reestablish relationships and agreements with them about using their services to pave our roads. And so we have work to do in this area. We need to spend the money that the council budgeted, we need to spend money next year, we need to get our streets paved. And so this is a high priority item, obviously. It goes back to public safety. Uh, we need to keep the, you know, immediately, we've got crews out now filling potholes. As soon as the plan opens, we anticipate in mid-March, we're going to have the asphalt plan open, we're going to go out to the streets and start filling those even at, at a higher rate. And so for the street paving, street repair, sidewalk programs included in here, all of that, the bottom line is, we need to get the money and we need to go expend it to keep our streets and sidewalks safe. I hope, happy to answer any questions in there.
Mayor, I have one.
Yeah.
In the past, we had always sent in recommendations to Mr. Bates about, you know, because to be honest, not everyone drives everyone's roads in everyone's district every day, right? So we, we got away from that because of the 10-year plan.
Right.
Is that something that you would welcome feedback to Mr. Bates if we have issues to still submit and go from there? Because we were kind of getting away from that because of the, the data and, and the 10-year plan.
Yeah. Mr. Schockley, you will appreciate, this is not a plant that I would encourage everyone in the city to give us input through the 3-1-1 app, right? So if you have specific roads or potholes or whatever you want filled, put it in the 3-1-1 app, and that will add to the data that we're collecting with this data-driven program with the, the cams that we have, that will feed and inform the decisions we make to which roads we go out to. So yes, it, feed all the information through 3-1-1, and Mr. Bates and his team will certainly make sure that our streets are safe.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, so I see Ms. Sullivan back there, and my question is really, like you mentioned late invoicing, right? Do we know if there are any invoices out there that are going to be coming in later? Like you said, late invoicing from the state. Are we waiting on anything that we'll need?
I'm sure, I'm sure that we are.
Okay. Do we have any idea how much that would be?
I don't know how much that will be.
Okay.
I mean, but certainly, you know, invoicing takes time from the state to come to us. It will be more than $700,000, I would guess. I don't know how much more, regardless of whatever that number is, like we're going to have to encumber money if we don't spend all the 3.45 going over the year.
Sure.
So I, yes, it's probably not as bad as 700,000, right? But I don't have the answer.
Okay, yeah, because here's, here's what I'm looking at. So the budgeted amount for, for this year, I think, and sorry, I should have brought glasses, the budgeted amount for this year, I think, is excessive. I'm looking, though, at fiscal year 2024, when we actually spent 2.7 million, which would be more, or 360,000-ish more than is budgeted for fiscal year 2026. So that's why I was just hoping that we had a more accurate estimate of what it's actually going to be for 2025. Because some of these programs, you know, like the sidewalk program, it's really, really popular in my district, and I don't know, other districts may not know that it's there, but, you know, it's a program where the city covers the cost of labor to have a new sidewalk put in, and the homeowner just has to pay for the materials. So you can get a new sidewalk, which would usually be like 15,000 or 20,000 for, you know, maybe 700 or 800 bucks. It's great. So seeing that decreased from 100,000 to, in last year's budget, to 50,000 in this year's budget, you know, I'd, I'd just like to get a better idea of where we are currently.
Yeah, I, I would point to the accurate, so if we're talking about sidewalk going from 100 to 50, you can also go back to what you'll see in the FY '24.
Which is, right.
Where it's $14,000.
Right, and, and there were some reasons for that. Mr. Bates bought a new piece of equipment that year that helped them to be more efficient with that. He bought that, was that they, no, he bought that like in.
A little tiny backhoe thing.
Yeah. And I know that there were some staffing challenges during that year as well. So at one point, there was like a four-year-long waiting list for that program, and I think the new equipment was supposed to help with that. But, you know, I don't know how many people are still on that waiting list, or how many more people would sign up if they knew that it was out there. So, you know, people, people get really angry when they're told they have to pay for their own sidewalks, and when, i- it's very helpful to be able to say, look, the city will help you.
So for, like, current year-to-date, we're 50% through the year. For the sidewalk program, we're not even at $15,000 spent yet.
That's, that's 24.
Like, right now, 20 years, we're six months into fiscal year 25, we've spent $14,875 on the sidewalk program, so double that, and we're about 30.
Also winter time.
It wasn't in July when the fiscal.
Yeah.
Weather certainly impacts, but we've got a good sample of good and bad weather in that six months, I'd say. So, I mean, we're 6% of that budget.
No, absolutely, absolutely. And really, I say this too, just for the benefit of everyone who's up here, because I guarantee you, for the new folks, you are going to hear how terrible the sidewalks are in your district, or for Mr. Archer and Ms. Lehman, how terrible the sidewalks are all over the city. And so it's, it's a really good talking point to be able to say, we've got this great program, and it'll slash your costs of a new sidewalk. It's on the 3-1-1 app, to your point. I would like to see the word get out about this because, you know, I still hear all the time that there are people that got put on the list during COVID and they haven't been taken care of yet, and so there are folks out there. Let us know if you want a new sidewalk.
Mr. Chair. Let me just point to, you mentioned going back to 2024 and looking at that actual. This is why I took the six-year average of 2.345, or whatever the number was, in order to get as accurate as we could because of the lumpiness that Ms. Mount mentioned, and that we're, we're trying, right? And you have to go back to pre-COVID numbers, I think, to get a real reflection of what we can do going forward. So all of that to say, this is a flexible budget.
No, I know.
And so we're going to pave all of our roads, we're going to do the best we can to fill every pothole as quickly as we can, because I can assure you, as I've said to you before, people in each one of your districts has let me know about where their potholes are and that we need to fill them, so we're going to try.
Yeah, and, and my comments are as much for the benefit of the public as anything else. Put your sidewalk in 3-1-1.
There you go.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just real quick, before I forget, while Ms. Walling's talking about the sidewalk program, Ms. Holly, there are folks in Arlington Park and their neighborhood association that have used NIOH funding and also been matched by District Nine micro grant funding to help with repair for sidewalks, which is another reason why it's a great program.
I have another point, Chair, to bring up. I was contacted or discussing with an organization, I think it's called the Southside Alliance, over the last week, and they expressed concerns about their brick streets as a, as a historical aspect of a lot of the streets in Huntington. We have 100-year-old sidewalk, sorry, 100-year-old streets that are still rocking out, they're still great, and we don't have to pave over them, but they are, some of them are in need of repair. It's interesting, back in 2020, I contacted our Public Works Director, I think I got an estimate for the cost per square foot to repair a brick sidewalk, that means just leveling it out, where we have the really bumpy ones that are bad to drive over, was somewhere like $10 a square foot, which is expensive, but it would have a return of, an ROI, a return on the investment after somewhere between four and six years, which would put it outside a mayor's typical administration term, but would recoup savings for the city because we would no longer have to pave year, year over year for it. So I, I'm going to guess that brick street repair is not included in this budget that we're looking right, at right now at Public Works, this is just for asphalt street repair. Do you think?
No, I wouldn't say that. I'd say that this is not specific to a brick or a paving, that the budget was for street repair, and that when, when there's a brick street that needs repair, they're going to repair it.
Okay.
Right? And so the question is, which ones need repaired, and that will be prioritized. But if there's a waterline break on a brick street and they've got to repair it, that is in this budget.
Excellent, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to like advocate out there that I live on, for instance, I live just on the edge of Southside, on Sixth Avenue between Fifth and Sixth Street. Now Sixth Avenue is a city-owned street, and it needs paved sadly, almost yearly, because of the brick underneath it, it expands, moves, et cetera, and so potholes open up, et cetera. If, though, I know we don't want brick streets because it slows down traffic, it's hard on cars, et cetera, some of those side streets, like Fifth or Sixth Street, sorry, Sixth Street, if they, if we removed that pavement, that asphalt, and went back to bricks, it would, it would save the city some money long-term. So I just want to plant that seed in there as, or the thought idea of, because I get contacted by people who say, please bring, bring back our brick streets all the time.
I get contacted by them, too.
Okay, okay.
I do, too.
I agree with you. I love our brick streets, they help with flooding as well.
Yes.
Right? So there are many, many benefits to brick streets.
Yeah.
So I just affirm that idea.
I would also add that the curb cuts are cut for brick streets, because when they scrape down the asphalt, you'll see a large curb, and then when they put the asphalt back on top, your curb is like this, so it, I feel like the wa, it adds to flooding.
That's, that's a problem, that is a problem citywide, and the other problem, this is in my district as well, but Eighth Avenue, which is a city, or I mean, a, a state road, Eighth Avenue is a state road, but they never mill it down when they pave it. And so the drains, the stormwater drains are like that far below the top of the pavement, and it's really, really bad. So one thing I have noticed over the last few years is that whoever Public Works is working with, they are actually milling down, which helps with the curb cuts, it helps with the flooding, but whoever the state is working with, they are not, and it's really frustrating.
And the milling helps the longevity.
Yeah.
We actually talked about that at the Southside meeting the other night. I thought that Mr. Bates did a great job, referring back to, we've lost a lot of craftsmanship with the brick roads, too. That's part of the issue, is our city's doing a good job, but some of these other entities aren't, and that's creating a big issue, because everybody loves our, our brick streets. So that's the other thing we're in loss of, it's not just the monetary issue, but also the craftsmanship.
Any other questions about Public Works?
Contributions.
Onto contributions. Yeah, so for those that are new, contributions category, this is the money that we send to outside groups. Many of your favorite causes would be included in this. Recently, we've been very generous, we've had the ability to give a lot of money out to a lot of folks, and millions and millions of dollars. Because of the federal money that came through, that number was elevated. Unfortunately, obviously, that one-time money is mostly gone, and that we are reverting back to a level budget that is more in line with what we saw before COVID, before that federal money came, where you'll see a million-dollar reduction in this category, from 3.8 to about 2.8, 2.7, in that range. And so that's going to mean we're going to have hard choices. In the past, let me say this, we need to spend this money, this contribution category, on our priorities, right? And the priorities for the contingency money are my priorities, they're the same as the city's priorities, right? We need to spend it on things that matter to us, which is public safety, infrastructure, growing the economy. Thank you. So that's what we're going to do. And to do that, we have a lot of great partners, right, in a lot of different places. And so the first thing I want to do is make sure that how we spend this money is 100% transparent, right, so that you know where the money's being spent, where all the residents of the city of Huntington know where every dollar is getting spent, right? I don't believe that that's happened in the past, and I'm going to try my very best to make sure everyone knows where all the money's going, so that you can then see that it's being spent on our priorities. To do this, as I went back through the years to try to figure out where the money went, how it's being spent, who we have obligations to and who we don't, I, there was a contribution request form that was out there. What I realized is that not everyone filled that out, that some people just received money directly, other people were required to fill it out. So it was hard for me to figure out what was the justification for this line, as I'd go through and look and be like, well, I can't figure it out because the money was just given directly, whereas other ones, I could see it, and that felt imperfect to me. And so we have looked at that contribution request form, we revised it and updated it and put it back out on the website, and we will allow everyone to fill out that form, any group, anywhere wants to fill it out, can fill it out, and we'll consider it for What I really want first, you know, with this transparency, is that I know that we have to fulfill our contractual requirements, right? So let's start inside that contribution area, there are places that we have agreements with, right? That includes the parks and the animal shelter, right? So we have, the parks is a, is a, not complicated, but there are two different sections you'll see. One is our statutory requirement to take money in from taxes and send it to the park, that remains unchanged. The other part of it is a contractual agreement we have with them for services, where we have agreed to pay them in exchange for them taking care of Harris River Front Park. In an effort to be accurate with our budgeting, I asked our finance to have to look at the contract and do what it says. There's some ambiguity in that contract about with the $215,000 for that service, which was the cap, whether it was for one year or two. Half of 215 is 107.5, right? And so they, it says for two years in the contract, so they put 107 for each year, which makes it look like a reduction from last year. All of that to say, I've talked to the director of the park board, and what we want is to honor our commitment to have them continue to take care of Harris River Front Park, and that what they bill us for the work that they do, if they don't bill up to 215, we don't pay them for that. We pay them for what they do, and we will continue to pay them for what they do. What our team is doing now is looking at the contract, working with them, and figuring out what that may be. So we will continue to honor this contract, we will continue to pay them for the services they provide, which includes Harris River Front Park. If that number is more than what I have here budgeted, we will pay them more, and I'll come back to you and say, we're paying them more, right? They are working with the park board to make sure that they continue to do that service, and we honor our contract.
Mayor Fair.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I thought you were done. Continue.
I'm done with the park board part.
Okay, I just had to, so what, I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is that actually should say 215?
No, that hasn't been resolved yet.
Okay.
The contract says we're going to pay them 215 for two years, FY '24 to FY '26, is what it says. So by contract, it looks like it should be 107.5 each year, right?
Yeah.
It may be bad contract language, it may be ambiguity in the contract. If the actual intent is what they really need, what we have to do is just fix it, and if they come back to us and say, we can't do it for that, we're going to work it out with them. My commitment to you as a council and to the park board is we're going to pay them what it costs them to take care of the park, right? We're trying to honor the contract. We're not trying to reduce their funding. We're trying to accurately budget what's here so that everyone knows what we're supposed to be doing, rather than inaccurately doing it.
All right, cool. So it doesn't need amended, it just would be a budget revision if they needed?
More money.
More.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I need to go back a little bit, just say it in my kind of terms. So what you're saying is, we have contracts that has, or promises, I should say, things that we have to pay, but then there's other monies that we really don't have to pay that we just give money to.
I'll get to that, yes.
Okay, you, okay. That's what I'm trying to understand.
So right now, I'm working on contracts.
Okay, that's, okay.
Right?
Gotcha.
And I'll talk about the major contracts.
Okay.
Which is really.
All right.
The park and the animal shelter.
Okay.
We have a contractual written agreement, right? And then the other piece of it is, we don't have to have a written agreement, we just decide and give.
Just do it by, by city council voting or mayor.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Any questions on the park? All right, on the animal shelter, you all, I'm sure know that for many years, I think since 1979, we've had an agreement, the city, Cabell County, and Wayne County, to fund the animal shelter. We've done that in equal measures, meaning that we all bear the responsibility to provide an equal share of the burden that it costs to run it, right? I could, I'm going to find here for you the amounts that we've spent on that. Sorry, give me just a second.
Are we the only one that's keeping the animal shelter running?
No, ma'am. The county, both counties also. Both counties also contribute to it. It's supposed to be a third, a third, a third.
Okay.
I can tell you that that's not what's happened in the past.
It's a problem.
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we can go back as many years as you want. What, what we're going to do for the city is we're going to honor our agreement, right? Which is to provide a third of the support for it. In addition to that, right, I am welcoming the animal shelter to fill out a contribution request form like anybody else to, for additional funding, right? Because there's a lot of great work happening at the animal shelter. Is Ms. Cross still here? She is. I'm on her board. We've talked several times. They are doing amazing work. The work that, that has happened since she took over is amazing, right? If you know what was happening before to what's happening now, there's, there's been a lot of great progress and it's in no small part because of the work that she's done, right? And so I respect that and I want to continue that, to help, help her continue her mission. What the city has done, if we're going to get past the one-time monies that we've had, we've talked about that before, that federal money that comes in, right? We don't have that much money anymore. We don't have the $200,000 in ARPA revenue replacement money that we can give to anybody, right? Because the money's just not there. The account is gone. The money's been expended. So our obligation contractually, and we'll get then to the, to the, the part that we could decide, right? The discretionary piece, if you will, is to provide a third. That amount is determined by the board. The board is made up of the mayor, the Cabo County Commission President and the Wayne County Commission President. That budget for next year has not been set yet, right? That will be set in, in the coming meetings that, that we will have scheduled. At our last meeting of the animal shelter board, the, we asked for the operating expenses so that we could find out what they needed and help provide that. And so Ms. Cross is working on that and will get it to us. And when we do, the board will meet and the board will determine next year's operating budget for the animal shelter, right? That's the, that's how the process works. For some perspective on what the city has done in the past, you can go back and look again. This agreement's been in place since 1979. That's 46 years. But in 2016, we gave them, from the city, for our portion of the third, we gave them $125,000. In '17, it was $130,000, same amount in '18. In '19, it was $150,000. In 2020, it was $150,000. In 2021, it was $200,000. 2022, it was $150,000. In 2023, it was $200,000. In 2024, we budgeted $200,000, but we gave them $300,000, presumably through some kind of revision. When I was in Westmoreland, former councilman Bob Bailey told me that that money came from his ARPA allocation.
Eighty thousand to be honest.
Eighty thousand of it came from the ARPA allocation. In 2025, budgeted $400,000 and then we gave $200,000 from the revenue replacement from ARPA. What I have in this budget before you is $200,000, which represents a similar amount than what we've given in the past, absent the one-time money, right? It, I believe will fulfill our contractual obligations or our written agreements with the Cabo County Commission and Wayne County Commission. I've encouraged them to match the amount that we're giving so that we each provide a third, which will be a benefit to them. And what I can tell you is that under the current state, it doesn't seem like that will be enough to continue the mission that Ms. Cross has been pursuing. Because their expenses have, have, have increased. And so the difficult decision the board's going to have to make is what do we do about that? Right? What I can tell you, it's not going to come from one-time ARPA money because we don't have it. But what I will do is welcome the animal shelter and any other organization of the city that would like to submit a contribution request form to us. We will consider that as part of everything else that we're doing at the city. And then we will then spend the money in this particular category on our priorities as they stack up with the other very, very many good groups that are doing fantastic work that we need to support. And that when I do that, it'll be transparent and that you will know where every dime is spent and that our residents will know where every dime is spent. There are other things in the contractual obligations, but I'll stop there before we get to the discretionary piece of how we're going to spend this money.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Ladies first, sorry.
You said that agreement has been in place since 1979. Is that a contract?
Lawyer, it was a written agreement that started in '79 and 2002, it was, I think, re-signed or reaffirmed. And I think that there is an amendment that came up maybe last year that they, has not been signed, that they, the board members are considering.
Is, is there a way to get a copy of it? Is it just maintained by the board or would we ask the shelter?
I'm sure it's public record, but yes.
Okay. Well, you're, you're on the board, so you have a copy of it, right?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You said that the two counties have not paid their third?
Correct.
Okay. How, how long has that gone on, do you know?
I, I don't know. I can tell you that, short answer is, I don't know. I know it didn't happen last year.
Okay. So the only three board members are the entities that are responsible for determining the shelter's budget?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay, is that set by statute or is there?
It's my understanding is the agreement, not on the statute when you say state code.
Yeah.
I don't know what sets the, the, the board members of the animal shelter, the animal control board.
Does it have bylaws or an operating agreement?
There is, in this agreement, again, you're, you're asking me questions that are beyond the scope of what I know about how the state administers the code down to an animal shelter.
Not exactly. So you're on the board.
I am.
You're a member of the board. I'm asking you if the board functions under bylaws or some sort of other agreement?
I'm sure that we do.
Okay, but you don't, you don't have it?
I don't have it now.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Quick question. You say last year with splitting in thirds, how much did they match us on what we did last year? Is there any idea of that number?
Yeah, I think approximately, you know, the, the city committed $400,000 from the budget and Cabo County committed $200,000 and Wayne County submitted $80,000. That's what I think the numbers are.
Being on the board with these people, have you talked with both counties?
Yes.
Their representatives and how is their outlook on matching our 200,000 that has been proposed in our budget?
I think it's premature for me to say that.
I like it. All right. Just wanted to make sure. If the contract says a third, I mean, if we're doing our part, I think both other entities should do the same.
While I agree with you, they also have their own priorities that they're trying to accomplish. And what I think we, all three of us are in support of is this animal shelter and the good work that they do.
Yeah.
Right? And that we want to support it. And in the past, our city has, has committed more than that third and willingly done it. And certainly when we were able to, because we had more money from these one-time expenses, it was easy to do. And I would love to do that too.
Sure.
And if we had a bunch of one-time expenses, I would certainly do it.
And just to clarify, it's not a cut. It's just it was a one-time money.
It's correct.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
I, no, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Holly.
Good, because I might forget. So on the record, off the record, I won't be specific, but I have talked with someone from Wayne County and they are going to increase their amount for this coming budget, but it's not, it is still not up to what we have. But they are increasing some. Another thing, I think one of, this is just a, maybe a point. One of the reason why some people in the public and maybe some other people up here think that it is, maybe we should give more than a third or at least keep it, you know, within, because most of the animals that are picked up are within Huntington City limits. They're not necessarily in Wayne County or, you know, they're, they're more in city limits. Yeah, yeah.
We have, we have those numbers.
Or Cabo County. I mean, Barbersville and everything else.
Then you're talking countywide, right? For Cabo County.
Well, it's Cabo County and Wayne and I think the short answer is yes. It is true that it's not an equal amount between the three entities that fund it, yes.
And then as far as the request form, is there a specific amount that they, like, is there a cap that they are?
There's no cap, no. The request form is fairly simple again.
Okay. I mean, I haven't seen it. I was just curious. So if they can request, they can give you?
They can request as much as they want.
Okay, gotcha. And then you go back and determine what you think or what we think the needs are or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the contribution request form, who makes the decision is, are, of? Who gets the allocation? If the allocation is over 25,000, will it be presented to council to approve? Is there like a committee of folks that are going to look at each entity to make it fair? As in like animals, nonprofit, safety, you know what I mean? Like who's going to make that? That's the first that I'm hearing of it. Is this, just curious?
Yeah, I am.
No other folks will be involved in the decision-making?
This is, all of this budget, right, all of it is my responsibility, right? I will certainly bring it to you for approval when things meet this required limits. But yeah, like all the money we spend on fire and police and public works and the contingencies and the contributions, it's all based on, you know, this is the mayor's budget that I'm given responsibility for executing and I'll do that as best as I possibly can and as transparent as I possibly can.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a follow-up to Ms. Lehman's question and then I guess a couple of observations. Yes, I understand as far as police and fire and all of that goes. I understand that this is your budget. But I think Ms. Lehman's question and mine is too, is that when community groups fill out these applications for consideration, who will look at the applications and decide which, if any, are funded or come before council? Only you? There won't be a committee or anyone to give input on that?
I will take input from everybody, as we have with all the things that we spend money on, yes. There's not going to be a committee because my responsibility is to spend this money and I will do it in accordance with my priorities or the city's priorities. And right, and what we're going to do, what we've said we're going to do is spend it on public safety, infrastructure and growing jobs.
How will people know what they should provide input on? Will you give us a list of the requests that have been submitted? Will that be available somewhere?
This will all be public information. I'll show you all the request forms that come in. Like none of this, I'm not trying to do this behind closed doors. I'm not picking winners and losers in terms of, I'm not, I'm going to favor this charity and not tell you. I'm going to make this as transparent as I possibly can so that you know where every dime gets spent. And that hasn't been done in the past and I want everyone to know where all of our money's going. And I want people to see, I want the residents to see that what we're spending on are things that support the priorities that we've stated.
How will we and the residents be informed as to what, to what applications have been submitted?
We can talk about how to do that, but I'm telling you, I'm going to, I'll share with you all the contribution forms.
Okay, but are we going to get a list every month? Are we going to get copies of the forms? How?
We haven't gotten that far. I'd be happy to entertain how you want to do it.
Can I make a reference here? I mean, not to interrupt, but maybe like, because I totally appreciate your transparency. I think that you've done a phenomenal job being transparent from day one. If somebody, say, suggests or they put in a request, like, you know, the Thursday before the next city council meeting on Monday, would those requests be able to be given to us at the city council meeting so that we could see them?
I'm happy to talk through how we do this, right? I'm not, when the request comes in, we have to look at them, we have to vet them, we have to look at the financials, understand the need. And then before we fund it, before we make the decision, right? Like if it comes to council, it'll come to council. If it doesn't, I'm happy to tell you, we didn't fund this, right? The timing of all that, the mechanism of all that, I don't think has been particularly determined. What I'm telling you is the spear with what I'm telling you is I'm trying to share as much as possible so that you all understand. I'm not trying to hide any of it.
Yeah, if, if I can continue and just wrap up my questions before I yield the floor to anybody else and then I'm, I'm done. I understand that. Okay, so my, my next question or my next point, I guess, is, you know, you've talked about the priorities. You've talked about the priorities of the county and their own budgets and all of that. It would seem to me that just as you've done here, you've addressed our contractual obligations before you've addressed the discretionary spending. And it would seem to me that whether the county's priorities line up with their contractual obligations or not, that's not really a question. They are contractually obligated to do certain things that they are not doing, correct?
I'm not going to speculate about the county's issues.
Okay, but, okay. I think that's, I think that's it.
I mean, essentially, this is a city budget. We can't get you to necessarily speak on a county and I understand that. And, and I will say, I back the animal shelter more than just about anybody. I, my animals are from there. But I think that this budget speaks very clearly about, as a city, that the most important things are public safety at this point. So we have to look at this in a way that it shows that we're doing what the people overall need. And then we can go back and do other things with these monetary issues. I'll give to them myself, but we don't have these monies.
Animal control is about public safety.
Absolutely it is. It's all part of it.
It absolutely is.
So it all comes together in a budget that, I think the general consensus here is that somebody's trying to make a cut or trying to do this when we're trying to look at the overall picture of public safety.
That's right.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So I actually have two different questions. Okay, first, just so that I understand, because we're talking about contributions for the animal shelter, that Huntington, sorry, the city of Huntington, the mayor, and then I guess Cabo County Commission, Commissioner and a Wayne County Commissioner are on the boards and those are the only entities that are kind of, have agreed to contribute. And is the animal shelter also, it's, it can help all of Wayne County and it can help all of Cabo County? So that would include Barbersville and other municipalities?
I think Cabo, I think Barbersville also contributes some.
Okay, that was going to be my next question.
But not by agreement. They just do.
Okay. So, and so then as the, sitting on the board, you get to see all of the contributions that come in from the other municipalities and then yourself and also the Wayne County Commissioner and the Cabo County Commissioner. You can call up the other municipalities and say, hey, Chris Tatum, would you like to give us some more money because we need it to operate? That's the kind of stuff that you, sitting on the board of, board will do to advocate for the continued operation, successful operation of the animal shelter. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, the board's obligated to make sure the animal shelter continues in business and will do what we can to understand the operating expenses and ensure that they have the revenue they need to do their mission.
Yeah, I think that's fantastic. The, the other question I have, or maybe a statement, is that I thought I heard you say that you just revamped the request for funding form and that in prior administration, some entities were, were required to fill it out, some weren't. So you're not doing anything new. Under the Williams administration, people, all entities still had to fill out this form. And so for the last four years, our notification about who filled out that form or not has not happened. It's, so this, you're not doing anything new. You're doing exactly what has happened for the last four years. And what will be, except it's a new form. I'm just saying in regards to the mechanism that Sarah Walling was referring to is that there hasn't, as far as I'm aware, been a mechanism to alert us. And I do think Ms. Holly's idea was an excellent idea and I appreciate your willingness to be, to give us a mechanism and discuss it at a later time. But I just wanted to remind everybody that I don't think any of us have ever seen these requests for funding forms like, prior to them coming before council or administration of finance.
I've seen one.
Just one?
And it wasn't completed. It was sent to someone and I was copied on the email, fill out this.
To help you advocate for them to get that funding, which is really important. That's our job is to help those orgs get it, but it's rare for us.
You're talking about processes in the machine of, of, of being, having council informed or maybe going to, or at large in the, say, Holly. You know, for her district, it was somebody that asked for a contribution, just using you as an example. You know, to where they're in the loop. You are 100% correct. It has never happened.
Yeah.
So, so to your point of being transparent, working on a mechanism and understanding this, it's going a step further than it ever has.
Yeah, I commend you for that. That's good. We need that.
Yeah, what's going to be new is that everyone that gets a contribution is going to fill out a form.
Yeah.
Everyone that gets a contribution from the discretionary piece will get a form.
And then we'll also have that data going forward in years where you didn't have it in the past.
Right.
Love it.
One more thing and then like I promised, I'll be quiet, Mr. Chair.
You're fine.
I, I just would like to point out that a lot of the money, the, the increase in money, particularly the ARPA funds from Councilman Bailey, were dedicated to redeveloping and renovating the Cook School Building, which had been empty and deteriorating for literally decades. And so when we're talking about the economic development priorities of the city and of our constituents, what is going on in the Cook School is absolutely amazing. They are working with our technical schools. They have a Vet Tech program that, that is going on in there. They are spaying and neutering the animals onsite. They're providing veterinary care onsite. They're giving a practical component to trade school training that has not existed here before. And so it is enabling people to hone those skills and stay in our community and put money back into the community and pay tuition on our community higher institutions. And so I, I just want to say that the animal shelter is not just a place to keep animals until they find a home. It is a training and economic development driver.
And it was good seed money. I will agree with you.
Yeah, it's amazing. It is amazing. And I know Ms. Cross would show anybody around that facility anytime they wanted to go. It is truly amazing what they've done with a building that was just deteriorating across the street.
And honestly, I would challenge all of us, if we can't do it as a city, we all have our own monies. Let's all get together and try to put some other funding for them. Anybody that believes in it, obviously you can do what you want with your money, but it contributes to all of us. It covers all of our territories and our districts, so it's good.
I, I will speak, this is not a question, but I spent over two hours there yesterday evening and what they are doing. I, I mean, I've gotten a dog from there in the past. I've donated food. I've donated newspapers, which we can all do. But until you go and actually see what is behind the closed doors, what's, what's in every room, what it actually costs to do the surgeries. I mean, they have a mobile surgery unit that even has dental care. It's, it's amazing what they do. And I, I encourage everybody here to go take a tour and speak with her.
They have a monthly recurring donation program too, just saying. You can sign up for it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to say something. I, I think I asked the question because seemingly, I think everyone's forgetting in general that we were talking about a whole lot of ARPA money. And all these different agencies, not talking about this one in particularly, was promised, whether it was by contract or by mouth, seemingly they expect us to do the same thing under the money that we had. That's what I'm looking at. If you had- That's what I'm looking at. If you had $400,000 to give, and most of that was ARPA money, you don't have that now. And, and it's like, we started something that we're not able to keep up. And I'm not talking just about the animal shelter. And it hurts us because I think we are so quick to forget this was one-time money. And God bless us if we ever have another pandemic. But, it's like everything we've done, and I speak to different people, they're talking about what we gave them, whether it's the $100,000 ARPA money. We cannot promise something we don't have. That's what, I think that's my point. And what we do, we become liars. And we take money from things, I could say a whole list of things I think we gave too, that we shouldn't have. Once you give money away, it's gone. It does kinda trouble me that we've started all these people in different agencies, and we've been giving them so much money, and they have been running their businesses according to the money that we have given them. Not, I call it factual money. That was ARPA money. And it hurts, so we look like we're stripping money from them, when actually it was a one-time, and it's so sad because people, it's just like, and I'm gonna say this real quick, it's just like people that got checks because, I didn't get any money. But businesses that had money, they were able to build, to increase their different businesses. And then when that money's gone, then trying to keep that afloat is almost impossible. That's the hurting thing. Money could be good, but it can be bad when you don't have the reality of understanding it's a one-time shot. And I, I, I hate this because I'm looking at a lot of this, and it seemed like the last four years, and I'm thinking, if the ARPA money wasn't there, would we really have to deal with this kind of money at all? It's sad, it's hurtful, because people come to you, well, what about so-and-so? And what about this? And when you say, we don't have it. You can't promise everybody everything. We just don't have it.
Mr. Chair, I, I think it bears a little clarification that this is a, when you say it's a flat budget, it's flat from last year, right? It's flat from last year. So we have the same amount of money that we had last year. It's just allocated differently. So, for example, we are reducing the amount of money in this budget that would go to the animal shelter by $200,000. At the same time, we are increasing another department's budget for contracted services by $200,000. Or a hypothetical jail bill by $250,000. And so would I, in a flat budget, rather see the money that is going to economic drivers in our community, because something we're gonna talk about here in a minute, I assume, is 5670-109. We are talking about money that is going to help to increase the economy and drive development. We are taking money out of that, and we are putting it into something that may never happen, and is not based on, I mean, we don't know the average monthly jail bill, we don't know what we're paying right now, we don't know what we might be able to expect that to be. And so, it is, it is never gonna sit well with me to take money from economic development and put it into line items just because, why not?
And this is a place, this is a place for, to talk about that kind of stuff. It's not a Facebook post, it's not a side chat. We, we, it's, it's 11, 12 people here, and we're all going to agree on some and disagree on others. What we might think is important, I might not think is important, but that's the reason why we come together.
Sure.
You make good points. You really, really make good points. And so what we do, we talk about it. I, I, you know, animals is not the top of my priorities, but I know it's very important. So I can't cancel that because I think it's not a priority for me. So I, I do understand, I do understand that we are not all gonna agree. And each district has a different need.
Absolutely.
None of them are the same. The last thing Fairfield need to worry about is dog and cat, when we can't hardly feed anybody. You get what I'm saying? And so, my point is, we all are different. She makes very, very good points, and I will never cancel her, but I think a lot of times, things need to come together. Let's think on that. Is what we doing gonna make sense? And it's just not paper, and I understand what the mayor is talking about. This is budget, budget is, can change. But she has a right to say, well, I don't see it like that, da-da-da-da-da, I don't see it like that. So we all are gonna have a different need for our, our district, you know? I just wanna say that. We all just gonna see things, that's the reason why you have this many people, because one person doesn't.
Sure. Well, and I, I assume that the mayor is moving on next to the reduction in contributions to other entities, which I think will affect all of our districts.
Yep. Mayor Fairfield, would you like to continue, sir?
Thank you. Yeah, just a note on the discretionary part, so everyone's gonna have a chance to fill this out, so, type of organizations I expect to fill it out would be like the Cabo County Library. See, Ms. Bowen is with us, or was with us.
Sheriff there.
Hi. And so, they're an example of an entity that we have great respect for, that does great work, that helps with public safety, that helps with information and referral, that helps with reunification, that helps keep kids safe after school. And we have met on a couple of occasions, and I expect she will submit a application, and that we will continue our fantastic partnership with the Cabo County Library as they continue to support the priorities of the city. Others can, anybody can. No matter how big or small, if you wanna submit a contribution form, I would encourage you to, right? And so, for all of your districts, for all the people that have received money in the past, I would encourage you to send it to them. And so, somebody, I forget who asked about micro grants, maybe it was Ms. Layman. Yes, there is, we have removed the micro grants from this budget, and we understand that people in your district, nonprofits in your district, people that have come to rely on the money that you get, you used to decide who, that goes to, will now submit a contribution form. It will be a public record that we will share with everyone to see what they're requesting and see how that aligns with our, our priorities. I will accept all the input from you, from anybody else that wants to come and talk to me about why this one is particularly important. We will weigh it against all the other applications that we get, and then we will decide who gets funded, then we will tell everybody who got funded and how it fits with our priorities, make all the documentation public, and then spend our money on the things that are priorities, right? Obviously, I think Ms. Walling talked about economic development, how important it is. I obviously agree. If we had more money in this budget, I would spend it on economic development or public safety or infrastructure. What we're instead doing is, instead of spending it on contributions to outside agencies, we're putting it towards our own financial resiliency, right? I told you what our operating budget was, I told you where, that unassigned funding fund balance is, and what I'm telling you is that I do not believe that we are in the, the best financial position that we can be. We're not even in the good one. I believe that we need to build our financial resiliency. That's where that $11 million comes from. I'm moving things around inside the budget. It's overall flat. Money that's been moved out has gone to other categories. You'll see, one is contingencies, where we hold it to make that flexibility, so that if something happens that we didn't expect, we can spend it, and also to our financial resiliency, so we can hit that benchmark that I talked about. And so I'll be happy to answer any specific questions you have about that.
I have, Chair, because you mentioned the libraries, do we have a contractual obligation to give money to the libraries under, under the contributions?
We don't.
Oh, we don't. And so, libraries are super important. We all love our libraries.
Libraries are super important. We all love our libraries.
So, it's true, it's true. So is there, but the overall contributions budget line is down a million. Everything's allocated. So where is, where is the space for someone like the library, or which, which line item under contributions would an entity apply for funding and potentially get it like the libraries? That's, like, it would normally go under 5680101, other contributions, transfers, but it's, it's, there's nothing there.
Yeah, so, the, the total budget is 2.764 million dollars.
Yes, but everything's allocated out.
Yeah, it's not all allocated out, is what I'm telling you. Right, that, that, that number is a placeholder for how we're gonna spend it. What I'm telling you is what we're gonna spend it on are the things that we're contractually obligated to, some of that adds in there, and then there's another part of that that will give me discretion to take the applications and spend it on things. And so which line item that one goes in, I don't know particularly, but it would go in this budget in contingent, in contributions, thank you, for whatever the request is that we have money for.
Would that not be 5670109, the 800 grand for other entities for economic development? I think that's the one that was reduced pretty.
Okay.
I think that's where that, I had the same question.
It'll be in the budget.
Yeah.
You'll see it.
And, and I, we are hearing you say that the Huntington Library, Ms. Bowen, can submit a request fund, and you are going to review it, and you, and sign off on it, talk about it.
Yeah, I will review all the request forms that come. I'm not making any commitment to anybody until I receive the request forms.
We're not making a commitment.
Right, not today, and I know that's not a popular thing to do, but you can know is that I love our parks, I love our libraries, I love our animal shelter, right?
Yes.
And when I get these things, I'm being as transparent as I can. I can't say yes until I get an application. And I can't see what they're needing and how it fits in with everything else, and once we go through that process, I'll share it all with you, right? I'm not playing any games, I'm not trying to hide anything. What I can tell you is we've met twice, right? In her office once and in my office once.
All right.
We've talked lots about what she needs, and how the city might be able to support their mission, and how they can support our mission, right? That's the kind of thing that I think that everybody that wants money should think about, about how can, how can we have a mutually beneficial relationship where they support the city's priorities and the city supports theirs, and we move forward together. That's why we give contributions, right? Right?
I like it. Working together.
Working together in collaboration, like this is how government should work.
I like it. Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have another quick question. In December, council approved an allocation to information and referral. Has that allocation been written and received by the library?
I don't think so, not yet.
Is there a reason for that?
Uh, because we're not in a position to give it to them yet. As I talked about, we have a quarterly cash flow, right? And so I'm reviewing all of our expenses and making sure we can get to the end of the year, and I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to give it to them by the end of the year.
Okay, I have another question. When it comes to the micro grants, line 5670113, that has been completely cut out. So to Mr. Arthur saying we should be able to contribute to different priorities that we think in our districts, such as previously representing District Nine, the Civil War days, the ice cream social, things that benefit our communities as a whole, things in Fairfield such as backpack drives so kids could have backpacks, and different things like that. Is there a reason for that to be cut?
We're gonna look at all the requests that come in and stack them. And so, right, we're gonna include the micro grant request as part of the overall process so that everyone can see it, and make sure it aligns with our priorities.
Mr. Chair.
Yes ma'am.
So if someone has a request for $250, they're gonna fill that out, and it's gonna go to your office, and you're gonna have to look at every single one of those.
That's correct.
Okay, that, okay, that's gonna be a heavy lift. I have a couple of other questions. Ms. Layman asked about the allocation for information and referral that we approved, and you said that you were hopeful that you would be able to give that to them by the end of the year. Are you aware that that resolution that we passed included a contract that obligated the city to give that money to the library by the end of the fiscal year?
I am not aware of that. I will review it, and again, hopefully be able to provide it.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Yeah, sorry.
It's like a tennis match over here.
Are there, are there any other allocations that this council has approved for fiscal year '25 that have not yet been paid?
I'm certain, but I don't know exactly which ones. This is about next year's budget, not this year's.
Well, I understand that, but this is also really the only time that we have to ask you financial questions on the record, so that's, I'm just asking about that. Groups that would have been funded under 5670-109, those would include things like the A.D. Lewis Center, the Fairfield CDC, the HyLON CDC. Is, is that correct?
I don't know, but the specific line item that you pointed, but those are all organizations that are funded through Community Development Block Grants or some other mechanism.
Okay. So if, you know, those don't align with your priorities, then that funding would just be taken from those organizations?
I reject the notion, right? I would say that, that the priorities of the city are clear, right? I think that organizations, you mentioned, for instance, the A.D. Lewis Center is an important part of the city and we'll continue to support it. That's done through Community Development Block Grants, and we're gonna continue to, right? Like, all of our spending, every dollar from, again, police to fire to all these contributions, we're gonna spend on our priorities. And if something doesn't reach our priorities, we won't fund it. If you wanna ask me about a specific one, like, we'll have to look at that one. I can tell you, A.D. Lewis Center is something I very much support, and it does support the city's goals, and we will continue to support them.
Okay. One last point. You know, you've talked a lot about the resiliency of the city and the financial position of the city. What I think we cannot lose sight of, you know, you talk about the city's priorities and, and all of that. These organizations, they greatly contribute to the resiliency of our citizens. They keep people housed, they keep people fed, they keep people's utilities on. And, and I could go on and on. I mean, we all understand that, and so my concern is that as we stockpile money for the city's resiliency, as you phrased it, our citizens' resiliency is going to decline as a result. And so, you know, when you talk about priorities, my priorities are to the individuals. I don't want people evicted. I don't want people to have their heat turned off. And I just don't, I, I, I know money is money, but I don't know how we can justify a reduction here and an increase in other places when it means very realistically that people will not have a place to live.
Chair, if I may, another point, speaking about the current fiscal year. You mentioned that the funding, say, to the library's information referral that Walling just referenced, which is under contract. So if we have a contract and we don't fulfill that contract, in theory, that entity could take legal action against the city, right? So we don't wanna do that. We want to fulfill our contracts.
Fulfill our contracts.
Absolutely, and we want to support them. The other aspect, I guess, what I, if I, if I was mayor, and I took over a new budget, I would do, I actually, I, I talked to a resident about this. I said, I would do the dam test. Now, excuse my language, I'm referring to a barrier that holds back water. How, how much water can this dam take before it breaks? And sometimes, sadly, that might be our residents. And how much, how much uncertainty and, and how, how long can we hold back funds before they start to crack? And so I'm, I'm worried that, that we might be holding back one one-thousandth of the budget, under 75,000, to an organization like the library for two quarters, six months, when they expected it January 1st. And that might start to put a crack in the dam, that is the library that holds up our community, that helps people keep on their utilities, cause everybody just, just went through winter. So there's bound to be people right now who did not pay their January and February bills, and they're gonna get those shut-off notices any, any day, and they're gonna need to know how to get help, and how to get help is to call information referral. So as much as I hear you and I understand, if I was mayor, I would hold back to see what the city could take. But I think what I'm hearing from Sarah Walling, what I'm hearing from residents, et cetera, is that the dam test should be about over, and that it's time to release those funds. it's time to release those funds that we previously allocated and last year that the organizations needed, January first, so that they don't break, and I would ask you to consider that, because holding on until, uh, June thirtieth, that, that might be too much for some of our community members.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Can I make a, Mr. Chair, I mean, we have, can we establish, first of all, that three hours is not enough for this event? Um, I want to try to keep it long, but I have a comment. Um, one thing, and I'm not going to haggle over, um, micro grants or be argumentative about it at all, because it's literally like point zero eight percent of the budget. However, just one thing for everyone to keep in mind, to Sarah and Tia's points a little bit, is we obviously have a substance use disorder problem in our community, right? And it goes back to that, I don't know if it's a parable or verse, whatever, of idle hands and everything, and so when I think about these micro grants and what I have used them for in the past, it's paid, and everyone has their priorities, right? We talk about priorities, each district has its own priorities, right? A lot of mine, maybe because I'm a parent or whatever, but I focus on kids because a lot of, a third of our community lives in poverty, forty-eight percent are in the Alice, so working poor income, meaning they get to the end of their pay, paycheck, and they can't, can barely put gas in their tank. So, these are the folks that can't afford if their kid makes it to the Little League World Series, right? And we don't want to rob children of those opportunities, because we talk a lot about resiliency as far as going up the river and keeping people from falling in, as opposed to trying to scoop them out, which is where we are now with addiction in our community. We're trying to scoop people out, so just something to put in people's minds, I don't necessarily, I think of some of these funds as being preventative in nature, and I want, I don't want to lose sight of that, because we have a lot of bad cycles in our community to break, and while it might just be a couple hundred bucks, and I know they can fill it out, and I will be ushering people to this site to get this form, the two hundred and fifty bucks might be the difference between a kid being able to go to a camp as opposed to not being able to go to this camp and doing something they shouldn't be doing and thus perpetuating, so I'll give you back the one, this, we have eight minutes, so.
Yeah, I wanted to move on to transfers.
Can I say one more thing, just real quick? I'm so sorry.
Um, yes.
Just real quick.
I mean, we've talked about everything but dollars, just about.
All of us here run for office, um, and because we want to help the community and we have the same priorities as you as mayor, and I would just love for, instead of it just being you making those decisions, that you utilize us as council members who represent everyone in the community to help with the contribution request forms. That way, we are also being able to help in those ways. That's why, I mean, I love helping with the micro grants and, like, to Holly's point, helping out kids or whatever each person up here thinks is a priority, like, that's all we want to do, we're not trying to be argumentative or, you know, any type of resistance. We're all here to work together as a team, because this is a team thing, and like, I'm just offering to be a team player in that with these contribution request forms, that we can also help with that to maintain, I mean, all of us doing our jobs.
Yeah, nope. It's great.
Yep. Moving on to transfers, Mayor Farrell.
The transfers.
Maybe you could put just a line on there that says what district they're from, and then ask one of us, you know, for our input on that grant.
Their address is on there, so we could figure out the district, but yes.
Thanks.
Yeah. Uh, on to transfers. Uh, you can see that, um, the first top line is about the GND, Public Safety Building, that's bond debt that's been retired, uh, and so that's why that has been out, and then there's obviously not an election this cycle, so the fifty thousand dollars comes from that. Uh, on page two, you'll see the sanitation and trash. Uh, this is the contribution that, or the, the amount that the city pays for, due from, for four hundred thousand dollars to support it, because the revenue that comes in doesn't cover the expense, and so that gets transferred, uh, onto line fifty-six eighty zero zero nine. The other contributions, uh, that is for the arena bond debt that's been retired. Um, and so anyways, all of those numbers, uh, change because they're transfers inside the company.
Go ahead, go back for a second.
Any questions about transfers?
Are you missing a page?
Yeah, and I think Tia is too. Are you, do you have, how much do you have under transfers?
There's two pages.
Probably have one page as well.
Yeah, some of us are missing page two. And, well, actually, it looks maybe, I, I don't know.
This is page two. Maybe you only have one page.
Yeah. We don't have page two.
Okay. We'll be happy to provide it for you later. The bottom line is that the bond debt's been retired and that there's a transfer for sanitation and trash.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Contingencies.
Yeah, the contingencies is the fund, uh, where after all the budgeting for all the departments, the remaining funds are held. Uh, a state revision, it's important to say, a state revision is required, uh, to reallocate those to other departments. We want to use it to build resiliency. Also, if there's things that come up that we didn't expect, this is where it would come from, so as you have, as we have needs for the city, you'll see it here.
Is this the account, we have a percentage that we can't have more than a certain percentage held, or is that the?
I don't know if it's in this account or others, but there is certainly an amount that, that
Yeah, so it's not like we can
Hoard money. Right, we're not, yes.
So, could we move contingency money to help someone, someone who fills out a request funding form?
Estate revision would be required to move money out of this category.
State revision would be required?
Yeah, state revision, yes.
Okay, yeah, so that would be harder.
Yeah.
On to grants and
Uh, I touched on this earlier, that we only budget for what we know, and we're going to continue to pursue grants as best we can, and we'll come with budget revisions as the money comes in, uh, but this is five percent less than it was, uh, because we're booking what we know we have.
Capital projects always a little exciting if
Yeah, the capital projects, I would say, um, you know, you can, you can look at the number at the bottom. Uh, a bunch of work was completed, obviously, here in this council chamber, uh, the gazebo, some stuff at the arena, uh, the fire station, all comes out of capital budget. Once those projects are done, they're not included in the capital budget project. Uh, you can see that, uh, in the capital outlay, there's also design for streetscape that was complete, and so that amount is reduced. Uh, so all those totals are, are projects that are complete.
Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
I have a quick question. Would, would funding be for the new fire station in Weston within this category?
I don't think so.
Westmoreland?
Westmoreland, yeah, I don't think so. Yeah, we're going to fund, we're going to build that, that station.
I just didn't know if it would be in this section or?
Yeah, I, I'll feign ignorance, because I, I don't know what section that money goes in, but we're going to get that money from federal allocation, we're going to build that, that fire station.
Mr. Chair.
I would just like to say, uh, thank you for not cutting the budget for demolition.
Yes.
Um, I, I'd like to see it increased, but at least it's not cut, so that's good.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Last year, I think that line item was five hundred thousand dollars in the spring, and then it got, in the amended budget, up to a million, and so, um, we're going to keep it at a million, and we're going to, we're going to tear down the, the dilapidated buildings that need to be torn down.
Excellent.
We also can't, um, tear down our way to prosperity, so the ones that can be recovered, we're going to try to recover and build back our housing, it's a priority inside of infrastructure, and so part of it's tearing down stuff, part of it's building up stuff, and both are a priority for us.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Cole Severance.
Yeah.
Self-explanatory.
Let me recant what I said at the start of this meeting, when this is only about the general fund, I forget who asked me that, but Cole Severance is also a part of that, um, so it also was included that will come to you for approval. Uh, you'll see the numbers, we don't get to decide what's in there. Um, that's what our Cole Severance budget will be next year, essentially the same.
Uh, capital equipment.
Sanitation and trash.
Sanitation and trash. Uh, the numbers that you'll see that are reduced on the, um,
Sanitation and trash, sorry.
On the pickup fees and the refuse fees, uh, obviously, um, there's been limits that we imposed, the council imposed, and those are reflected in there, and then the last line you'll see there is the, um, contributions, or the four hundred thousand are the due to, but we get ones due to, ones due from, uh, because that account is not, um, able to maintain enough revenue to support its expenses. The capital improvement plan, uh, as I've said before, this, this is a projection to the future, it's a requirement that we look out, uh, out to twenty thirty. Um, I would say that these projects are hopeful, not all planned, they, we have them in here, like any capital project thing, it's, sometimes a wish list, the things that we would like to do if we had a bunch of money, we'll fund things, uh, this is not a priority list, it's just the things that are on there, and we will, uh, as we decide to fund them, come back to you. Uh, the rest of the ones in here, I believe, are all part of, of various budgets from other boards that we've included, as the charter asks us to. One is the Huntington Municipal Parking Board, which is just a draft, because we still don't have a permanent, um, parking director. Uh, you'll see that the, um, Marshall Health Arena's in there, I talked to you before about my dissatisfaction with the performance of that, and I have met with the, the management team on a couple of occasions to try to improve our performance so that we do not continue to exceed the amount that's been allocated. Um, Safety Town's budget's flat, and HUMDA's, uh, budget is in there for you to review, which is managed separately from this, but you have it for review, and we can answer questions about it later.
Any follow-up, last-minute questions, comments for Mayor Farrell?
I have one. When we factor in our, when we talk about days cash on hand, what do we say, we have like thirty-ish right now, and we're trying to get to sixty, ultimate goal is like ninety?
No, the ultimate goal is eleven million dollars in sixty.
Are we able to factor in our assets of that, so city-owned property, are we able to factor that in at all, to say, like, if the, you know what, completely hits the fan, we have these assets? Does that come into play at all?
Interesting.
No.
Okay.
Because that, we can't
I was just curious. I'm not saying it's a good idea at all, I'm just curious.
We can't use that to pay the bill, right? Like, if you have, you get to go get a mortgage, you'd have to find some kind of bond financing or something like, or, I don't know what you do, but no. No, we're looking at, um, you know, and that's an ending fund balance that we're working on
Okay.
To drive, um, not necessarily cash, which is important to know the difference, because the fund balances include other things that are not cash.
Right.
Um, so we're really talking about the unassigned fund balance is what I'm focused on.
Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
I didn't know really where to ask about this, maybe planning and development, but, um, you know, I think you and I, and, and Ms. Burns and I, and some other folks have talked about the land bank. You said that we can't demolish ourselves to prosperity, and I bel, I, I agree a hundred percent with that. Um, I would really, really like to see consideration given to getting the land bank back up and functioning. I said this last year during the budget session, Charleston is doing really incredible things to incentivize home building and development. There's no reason that we couldn't do the same. I would really like to see that be a priority, because I think that's safety, I, I think that's economic development, I think that's lots of things.
And infrastructure, right? And I agree with you that in our priorities of infrastructure, there's two things, there's flooding and housing, and that's exactly right, I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
Um, the, for the CB, CDBG, I can never say that correctly.
Say it three times real fast.
Um, the budget that we have is for, uh, twenty twenty-four, is there a new budget? I mean, this has the eighty Lewis operating fund, um, and other, other budgets in it, is, do we have a new one of that?
Doesn't come out until
Till March, April.
Okay.
We'll get our allocation then.
Okay.
Um, and then, I, I will just tell you, the public and everyone, historically, it's been decreased a little bit, it's chipped away every single year.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and there are rules and priorities around that, so much has to go to, um, the administration's cap, there are rules that go around that CDBG money, how it's allocated. Only certain districts in our area are able to receive that funding, um, so there are things around that, and we'll get more into that, um, when the allocation comes out, and, uh, if Mr. Lemley is still here, he's, he's probably one of the best to hit questions about CDBG, so.
Chair, I have a question. So, I know that we went through things fast, because we're over, uh, twelve o'clock, but we really just flew over HUMDA, the Huntington Municipal Development Authority, and it has a almost twenty million dollar budget, but it seems like it's operating now at a loss, and so I feel like twenty million dollars is something we should all talk about and, versus, I think the public should also know more about it. Can you tell me about the money that's going on there and?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to talk about HUMDA's budget. I, this is about general revenue and the coal severance. I'm happy to entertain whatever you guys want to understand what's going on in HUMDA, it is obviously a part of the city, but it's, I, I'm not prepared to answer any questions about it today.
Um, what is your influence over HUMDA, so the public and our new council people can understand?
I think I'm on their board.
Okay.
Right?
Are there any projects that they're looking to invest in?
There's a bunch, HUMDA is doing amazing work all across the city, right? And I, again, not prepared to answer specific questions about it, but HUMDA is the part of the city that we use to buy land, sell land, it's part of the ACF development, it's part of the Northcott development, it's part of the Innovation District, like, they are